All right, thanks.
Thank you. And Kathy Ward, two minus one minute. Councilmember Friedman, when you are ready? Perfect?
Thank you.
Perfect. Looks good, sounds good. Okay, we are, it's now nine o'clock, so members of the public can hear us. And Madam Mayor, let me know when you'd like to start the broadcast.
I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Welcome to the June 9, 2020 special meeting of the Santa Barbara City Council. It's a budget hearing, and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will you do a roll call vote, or a roll call, Ms. Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sneddon?
Here.
Councilmember Friedman?
Here.
Councilmember Harmon?
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez?
President.
And Mayor Mario?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Gorman. Do we have anyone who wants to speak on open public comment items that are not on our agenda?
Madam Mayor, council, and members of the public, yes, we do have three members of the public who have called in and who have all raised their hands indicating that they would like to speak.
We'll open public comment.
Very good. Okay, our first speaker will be Alan Gallegos, then Anna Marie Gott. Ms. Gott, I just sent you your PIN through the system, and Howard Green. Alan Gallegos? Please go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. In January 2019, we met with George Buell, Renee Brook, and Andrew Stuffer to discuss growing concerns and request revocation for two ADU permits on Arriba Way. Our list of concerns were a result of countless hours of research, including outreach to builders, city staff, land use planners, and legal counsel. During this meeting, we spoke about the blatant manipulation and illicit use of the permit process across both permits. What stood out most to George Buell was our claims of illegal grading. He told us point-blank that if illegal grading was found, he would revoke these permits. We left feeling discarded as our exposure to such blatant manipulation of the permit process should have resulted in revocation. The city attorney, Denny Way, has said that he can prove illegal grading has occurred. It also mentioned that his case would only result in punitive damages. When I asked Mr. Way if George Buell and the Building Department were aware of the evidence that he has based his case on, he replied with, "All of the evidence that the city attorney's office used was provided by the Building Department, and any evidence we obtained from the neighbors was provided to them as well." This past January, I emailed George about initiating revocation after learning of Denny's strong position and conviction to this case. George's response was, "This case is now being handled by the city attorney's office. I will ask them to respond." I have not received a response. Pointing fingers is a systemic way to ignore the public interest and do nothing. City Council, I ask you to insist that before budgets can be approved, request they draw the line in the sand for scofflaw builders. We are handing you an open and shut case for revocation that will stand up in court. If we can't, as a city, stand up to bad actors, there is no way we can improve the building process because scofflaw builders will simply take even more liberties than ever before. Please take immediate action and add this to your agenda and restore at least some faith that you can do better for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallegos. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Anna Marie Gott, after Ms. Gott, Howard Green. Ms. Gott, please go ahead.
Good morning. I hadn't actually planned to speak on this particular item this morning, but I think I will, which is to echo Mr. Gallegos's statement about scofflaw builders. Now, if you consider that right now, the Business Advisory Task Force, as well as some people in the Community Development Department, would like you to actually remove and revoke one of our items for our ordinances, which is not to enforce our ordinances. That would actually increase the number of builders, and then, excuse me, the number of people who actually commit offenses within, that have been identified in our city ordinances. So that could be everything from someone illegally building, anything from a garage to an ADU, to someone that actually has committed numerous noise violations, parking, has removed their parking from all of their plans and is not providing parking as required. It could be someone who actually has built a home that was a Spanish Mediterranean versus the ranch that was actually approved maybe in Single Family Design Board. These, all of these issues that I'm talking about have to do with oversight. And the problem that we are facing at the city is that we do not have even-handed oversight. The issues that we actually bring to City Council with regards to parking or building, or the, even the use of setbacks in a project, all of these issues were actually discussed and permitted in an ordinance that a City Council took the time to actually hear and then approve. And the problem that we're having right now, which is going to result in a city that we don't recognize them. Because if you think about it, individuals that don't provide parking increase the problems in the neighborhood for parking. It creates, in some cases, creates noise. If you have one home on a street that decides that they're going to change the design of their building, it changes the entire landscape of that, or streetscape of that street. And it hurts all of the decisions in the future when you take a project to ABR, HLC, or Single Family Design Board. And I would really urge you not to eliminate that ordinance that says that we are not going to have staff enforce our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is Howard Green. Mr. Green, please go ahead.
Hello. Good morning, council members, Madam Mayor. I'd like to comment on the virtual meetings that, the visibility. I have the go-to meeting up on one screen, and on another screen, I have Channel 18. Channel 18 seems to be about 10 seconds late. Maybe it's my equipment, but I'm curious about that and would hope that that might be something that could be addressed. Someone last Tuesday made the comment that it would be nice to see the council members' faces so they can judge the reactions and so forth. We only see their faces when I think they've queued up to speak to us. So that would be a comment I would make. And Ms. Gorman seems to be very capable but overloaded. I think some of the other conferences that I've seen, there is a helper, maybe not in the same room, that provides some of the switching capabilities so she can focus on the agenda. It would be also nice to be able to see the speakers if they're so equipped. I realize that that could lead to some mischief, but you know, you can always cut them off if it's really objectionable. And the final comment, Mr. Oster Guterres has extensive experience in the video field. It would be interesting for him to be employed to, not employed, but to utilize his skills to help people, the council members, with their lighting. I'm afraid to say that the quality of you, Ms. Mayor, is very good. I don't know what kind of setting you're in, but some of the other council people seem to be in fairly dark circumstances, so we can't really see them even when they are on and speaking. So again, I think Ms. Gorman needs a helper. The other comment in my last 30 seconds is that Saturday's march was beautifully executed as far as the police role. They had motorcycles and bicyclists blocking intersections when the signals were, would otherwise allow cars to cross State Street. And I think it was very appropriate. I'm wondering what was different this time than a week before? Thank you.
Thanks. Is that the final speaker, Ms. Clerk?
Madam Mayor and Council, Richard Clausen has called in. He has not raised his hand to speak on this item. And he's not doing so now, so he may wish to speak on the next item. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll close open public comment and go to our first item. Ms. Clerk, would you read that into the, into the record?
Item one, fiscal year 2020 recommended operating and capital budget.
Thank you. I believe we're starting with community development. Good morning, Mr. Buell.
Good morning.
As soon as you're ready to start, please take it away.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members. As you know, the Community Development Department is responsible for working with the public, your council, and decision-making and advisory boards on various types of planning and development applications and policy initiatives. We strive to strike a balance between the community's expectation of environmental stewardship, appropriate land uses, beautiful and thoughtful design, and health, safety, and accessibility in the built environment. All of these are important components of the quality of life we enjoy here in Santa Barbara. In addition to, in addition, our department is responsible for the establishment of monitoring of affordable housing, federal community development block grant administration, provision of rental housing mediation services, and coordination of outreach and assistance to our homeless residents. All these things together, we're presenting to you our budget for the forthcoming fiscal year. And I would like to mention the other managers and supervisors who are here with me today. We have Renee Brook, who is our city planner, Dan Gullett, Danny Cato, Susan Reardon, Irma Unzweita, Allison Debusk, and on the building, from the Building Division, we have Chief Building Official, Andrew Stuffer, Tim Dunn, Kristy Forman, and Brenda Nielsen. Laura Doubles is here. She's our manager of Housing and Human Services, as well as James Hamilton and Crystal Vaughn, who is a supervisor with his group. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to James, who will kick off our presentation, and we'll hear from various managers as we proceed through. So, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Buell. Welcome, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name's James Hamilton, Community Development Business Manager. Next slide, please. So as stated, we're here presenting the Community Development's fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. The Community Development Department, our mission is to assist the public in managing the development of the community in order to protect and preserve the quality of life, promote a sound economic base and appropriate design, and ensure safe construction, all in balance with the constraints of the city's environment and resources. Next slide, please. I want to give you a quick overview of the presentation, let you know the topics that we're going to discuss and the order that those topics will be presented to you. I'll open with a department overview, look at the organization chart, a quick budget snapshot, and then we'll move into detail on the various divisions and programs that make up the department. After that, we will take a look at the proposed fee changes for fiscal year 2021. We'll be presenting a slightly revised version of what was taken to the Finance Committee a few weeks back. We'll do a quick two-slide general fund budget snapshot after that to examine the mid-cycle adjustments that were made to get us to the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. Then we'll spend some time on the budgetary impacts related to COVID-19 to the department, present our 5% expenditure reduction plan, and then end the presentation by taking a look at those funds that lay outside of the general fund that the department has a responsibility for: affordable housing, CDPG, home, and the successor agency. Next slide, please. So the Community Development Department consists of 12 performance-based budget programs. It spans five funds, and the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget includes 77 FTEs. As you can see from the diagram, there are four divisions that make up the department. We have planning, housing and human services, building and safety, and administration. The programs that make up these divisions will be examined in detail in the next section. Next slide, please. This graphic illustrates the expenditure budget for fiscal year 2021 across all five funds. Just to give you an idea of how much each fund contributes to the total budget, as you can see, the, the general fund consists of 83% of the total expenditure budget for fiscal year 2021. And while affordable housing, CDPG, and home make up a much smaller piece of the pie, they do have a big impact in the community, as you will hear in the next section. Next slide, please. So focusing on the general fund expenditure budget of 13.44 million, this graphic breaks that budget down by division to give you an idea of how much each operation consumes of that budget. Housing and Human Services and Administration account for about 10% each, while Planning consists of 43% of that expenditure budget, and Building and Safety is 37%. Next slide, please. Once again, focusing on that general fund expenditure budget of 13.44 million, this graphic takes that budget, blends the divisions, and breaks it down by cost category. And this is really just to illustrate, as is the case with most, if not all, general fund non-capital operations, that the majority of activity is consumed by salary and benefits personnel costs. In Community Development, 75% of our expenditure budget is consumed by salary and benefits. Next slide, please. So we're now going to move into the section of the presentation where we take a more detailed look at the divisions that make up the department and the programs within those divisions. As stated previously, James Hamilton, Community Development Business Manager, and I'll be presenting the Administration Division. Next slide. So the Administration Division is grouped with the Successor Agency because the business manager has some responsibility for developing that successor agency budget. For fiscal year 2021, we have expenditure budget of 1.41 million and 5.73 FTEs. Some of the responsibilities that this division are tasked with includes providing financial support to all divisions of the department, being the human resources hub for the department, coordinating the annual budget. We have staff who provide illustration and graphic design services, both departmentally and citywide. And we also have staff that manage the commission secretaries, who provide support to the various boards and commissions, as well as helping with the dissolution of the successor agency. Next slide, please. And then just to quickly hit on a few accomplishments this year. One, I want to acknowledge the administrative supervisor and other staff for working really hard to establish policies and procedures for board and commission meeting administration. They're doing a great job with that. I also want to acknowledge the graphic artist for working with information technology to facilitate trainings on the city's digital asset management system. There's an image of that system on this slide, and many of the images used in this presentation are pulled from that system. And then, lastly, just an accomplishment as a P3 objective was to prepare the recognized obligation payment schedule for the successor agency and present that to the county oversight board. That has been done. Next slide, please. I'm going to go ahead and hand the presentation off to the Housing and Human Services Manager now, so she can present her operation.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Doubles.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Laura Doubles, and I'm the Housing and Human Services Manager. So in our area, next slide, please. What we do is we actually address the city's human needs. We oversee, I oversee the divisions on homelessness, human services, and also affordable housing, as well as our rental housing mediation program. We assist with funding our city's elderly, children, teens, homeless, veterans, disabled, and physically or mentally ill. We assist the community with general welfare issues, and we also help to fund capital improvement projects for nonprofit agencies to help them sustain their infrastructure, to continue operations of their programs. And basically, we help our small businesses with low and moderate income opportunities for employees, as well as our focus is mainly in people, helping people of lower income levels. Next slide, please. I'd like to acknowledge our senior staff member, Liz Stotts, as well as Lindsay Drews in this area. They, they work on the CDPG and human services agencies. They do an application cycle every year. And typically, we received this last year at least 55 grant applications from various agencies that help our community. And they also make sure that we are reporting correctly to all of our HUD and state representatives as far as what we're doing, and that's submitted in a consolidated annual performance evaluation report that goes to HUD, as well as they deliver grantee performance reports to our human services committee, which is appointed by our council. And they ensure that the disbursements are always met during, during the year with timeliness requirements from HUD. Next slide, please. So our recent accomplishments for this area, we awarded 45 agencies this cycle for services, human services, and five for capital projects. And we also did do our five-year, which is, every five years, we have to do a consolidated plan, as well as a fair housing analysis of impediments that we make sure we also do in conjunction with the Housing Authority that needs to be adopted by our council as a HUD requirement. Our annual action was completed, and we updated our citizens' participation plan. Next slide, please. And in homelessness services, we've, we've definitely done a lot in our homelessness area. Very proud to say our programs are, are doing well in this area, and we've been able to really focus in and respond to some of the most difficult issues in this area for the city. What we do is we assist individuals and families to hopefully have street exits. We provide them ways and assistance in case management to get back to self-sufficiency, as well as hopefully permanent housing. As you can see in the picture here, CityNet has been our new outreach, street outreach provider this past year, and they've really done an awesome job so far on tackling some of the toughest issues in our city. We also, they also provide permanent supportive wraparound services, and they are a key player in our HEAP program, which is a partnership of several partners: Cottage Hospital, CityNet, our Police Department, the city's Housing Authority, as well as PATH, and of course, ourselves. We had all gotten together, and we actually won an award for our HEAP grant of $2 million. We have approximately 1.25 full-time employees, mostly myself and Liz Stotts as well, that work in this area. And we try as hard as we can to assist our local businesses and communities with response to address their homeless issues as well. And SB Act has also been a big part of this as well this last year. They have taken over our collaborative approach to help the city have all of our homeless service providers have an venue, an avenue, to regularly meet and discuss issues and how each other can actually serve and help each other. And that has been, had enormous success in this past year as well. Next slide, please. Our recent accomplishments in homelessness, our HEAP grant has actually housed 28 homeless people, and those have been the top 50 of the most vulnerable people in our community. Very, very difficult cases, and the ones that usually use the most public services as well. So our goal for this HEAP grant to be completed next June, 2021, is for 50. We are well over that already, halfway, and we are continuing to make good progress. We've actually only been doing this for a little over a year at this point, and we have a little over a year, year, three months to go. And we are definitely more than on track with that, so thanks to our partners on that one. CityNet, they, most recently, one of their bigger accomplishments has been to resolve our Casique and Nopus underpasses, and we had an issue on Campbell Street that was pretty pretty harsh on our public right-of-way. They had basically kind of blocked the right-of-way, and we had to make sure that we had access for our public on that. So those were both very successful initiatives, and there are still people that they are case managing from those areas that they assisted and are having some success in getting them reestablished in their needs and also permanent housing situations. So that's very good positive news. Also, they were present for our reopening of State Street. They were there the whole weekend, as well as the holiday on Monday. And just that weekend alone, they were able to accomplish five reunifications, four street exits, and twelve diversions, which is huge. This is sometimes not even seen with in a half a year, but they accomplished that in one weekend. And they also were there to resolve any business complaints, and they responded immediately to any issues that we had there. It was very good to have them present, and I really believe that they helped us very much with the reopening on State Street. Next slide, please. And SB Act, SB Act came on board with us this past year, and they completed their first year with us, providing a citywide collaboration with collective impact methods. And that is semi-new to us. We had that in the past, but it's being restructured and updated, and they are very, very proficient in what they've done with this. They started that collective impact model, and through that, they have formed a steering committee with some very, very valuable partners, mostly directors of agencies that all have stakes in homelessness, as well as they have held three all-call meetings that have been very well attended by multiple agencies, most all of our agencies here in the city. And this provides a venue to really talk about some of our most complicated issues and have agencies be able to collaborate together in addressing these. We have, they have implemented several successful regional action plans. The council has been very aware of being able to call on them for assistance and being able to have them take an approach to open communication channels with, you know, our east side neighborhoods and some of our business owners. We've had multiple agencies that have been part of these wraps, is what they're called, and have had a lot of success in those areas. They also established a new community food program for us, and that was, you know, a real initiative by them. They raised funding, they had the Julia Childs Foundation involved, as well as many other donors that helped to put our restaurants staffing back to work in very hard times for them. They were actually providing meals to our homeless, so it was a win-win on both ends. And they definitely lead our urgent needs with what we have that we come forward, and we find that, oh, okay, this is an issue we need to address, and it's an urgent issue. And they have been there, and they have provided calls weekly, bi-weekly, two times a week calls on different wraps that are needed, and they are very good leaders for developing an open and very respectful communication lines. Next slide, please. Our rental housing mediation program, I'd like to acknowledge Andrea Buffano, our senior and all staff member, and also Alba Marshall. They have really been put to enormous use in this program this past year. There's been a lot of legislation that's come down from the state, as well as our own local legislation or ordinances, and they have provided a range of dispute resolution services to our community. Their ultimate intent is to help settle disputes between tenants and landlords. They, their services help us to prevent evictions, and ultimately, by doing so, homelessness. They are very valuable to our area here in the city, and they help some of the most distraught cases we have. And they've been very successful in establishing good communication and resolving many high-profile and very difficult cases. Next slide, please. Their workload and performance measures this last year. Our city mandatory lease ordinance that the council passed was also recommending our program in that ordinance. So that has actually very much increased our services for this program, service needs, I should say. And the program has been able to accomplish an awful lot on helping our tenants and landlords to adhere to our one-year mandatory lease requirement offers. We also had a California Tenant Protections Act that went into effect on January 2nd. That was AB 1482. That was a huge legislation for this program because it established rent caps at five percent plus inflationary rates. Plus, it also addressed just cause eviction protections. So this bill actually really has put a lot of workload in this area, but some very good outcomes that we've had. And our staff has really stepped up to the plate and has educated themselves on what is needed and has helped our city attorney's office even in making sure that we're implementing our legislation correctly and has done a great job. Our recent COVID-19 evictions moratorium was put in place due to the state governor's executive order, and that actually just got extended to July 31st. Our staff has been very much so involved in all of that and helping to make sure that we are implementing that correctly here in the city as well. We ultimately have had a dramatic increase in requests for service in that area. Next slide, please. And I just will let you go over this slide without really going on each bullet point. What this ultimately shows, though, is our program has been enormously successful, as well as very much in demand. We also serve two other jurisdictions, Carpentry and Golita. We help them with their issues as well. And we are on target to serve at least 1,000 unduplicated clients by our year-end. And we also, our staff also oversees the fifteen-member, which is currently thirteen, rental mediation board that is appointed by the council. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, this area is very well maintained, I should say, with our old redevelopment agency portfolio of plenty of loans in affordable housing. But we oversee all the site monitoring and making sure that our affordable housing are in good shape, sustainable, safe, decent. We have ultimately 4.12 FTEs. I'd like to acknowledge our housing project planner, Lucy Graham, as well as Melissa Bonio and our new addition, Maria Schroeder, as housing project specialists in this area. And they do an amazing job at keeping track of an enormous portfolio of affordable housing for us. What we do is we fund and we provide project management and oversight for new affordable housing developments, as well as just acquisition of new units, making sure that we monitor, site monitor, as well as rental rules, making sure that, that the landlords are making sure that rent rules are overseen, as well as our ownership units. We've had a lot of resales and refinances lately due to our low interest rate environment in this area. Next slide, please. So this is just a few bullet points of what we make sure to do in our world of affordable housing. As mentioned, our sales, resales, refinancing, those are all areas that have been in high demand this last year. A lot of staff workload in that, as well as we ensure that we have our city inclusionary housing ordinance that was just recently passed for rental, as well as our older ownership inclusionary ordinances. We make sure that the city's in compliance with those when people go to do new developments. As, you know, typically having to address that issue of either providing units or making sure that we collect our in-lu fees to provide those units downstream somewhere. We ensure that we get our loan repayments on time, timeliness, and make sure that we have that funds to hopefully recycle into new affordable housing projects in the future. We certify compliance on actually 1,270 rental units, as well as 460 owner-occupied units every year. And we are in the process of updating our policies and procedures manual. We are nearly complete on that and should have that out soon. Next slide, please. Recent accomplishments, we had Johnson Court just opened not too long ago, and that was sixteen affordable units for homeless veterans. And last thing that I've heard is that they are fully occupied, so good news on that front. We also just came forward, and the council approved three single-family homes on a lot at 817 North House of Puerto Street that actually was assisting transition house in housing homeless families. So that was a really good project as well. And then we have funded Heath House for rehabilitation that's due to start any time now. And we helped Casa Mariana Project with Transition House. We've completed their roofing and painting, and it looks really good. They sent us some pictures, and it looks great. We also completed the painting at the Domestic Violence Shelter, and we have assisted many refinances and resale sales, at least over a hundred this past year. Next slide, please. And we have some new secured funding that is coming our way. My, our area here is kind of the focus right now for the governor and the state, and they are trying to put a lot more money into these areas to develop more affordable housing, as well as address homelessness issues. So in the affordable housing realm, we are going to be getting permanent local housing allocation. We call it PLHA. That was established by Senate Bill Two when the electorate passed that measure. And the first year actually went to planning issues with helping them to streamline, streamline planning processes. But after that first year, this fund was established, permanent local housing allocation. And it comes from an assessment of $75 real estate transaction fee for every real estate transaction here in Santa Barbara. And it's a sustainable annual allocation because it has been passed on a permanent, ongoing basis. Our allocation for this next year is $453,000. And we need to actually present a five-year plan that is required to receive these funds. And we will be bringing that forward to the council, our plan, to, in very, very shortly, actually. And the council will have an idea of where we want to put those funds. We also are getting our CDBG disaster recovery. This is a little different than our CARES Act. This one is because of our 2017 disasters that happened. The state has actually allocated a certain amount, which is 848,000, to our city as a one-time allocation to help provide multiple family affordable housing developments for lower-income families. And this is, was given to us for the issues that we faced during those disasters. Next slide, please. And so our additional considerations that we are presenting to the council is we, the council actually requested us to come forward with an additional rental housing mediation specialist. That is going to be about $101,000. We are actually proposing to bring that forward in our PLHA funding to help fund that position. So that would not actually be from our general fund. This would be our allocation to help provide assistance with our, a new RHMP specialist in hopefully preventing more homelessness, as well as helping our community with the difficult issues that are really presenting these days with evictions and rent increases. And so this will give us the funding that we need for that position. And also, they will be helping with the one-year mandatory lease. And in the meantime, our temporary evictions moratorium that's been placed due to the COVID-19 in response to the COVID-19. Next slide, please. And with that, that completes my areas that I oversee. I thank you, council and Madam Mayor, and I would like to present Andrew Stuffer, our chief building official. He'll be up next.
Actually, Madam Mayor, council, if I could hop in just real quick. Madam Mayor is having some technical difficulties. I think usually we pause at this point for some questions, so if maybe Mayor Potem could assist with seeing if there's any questions from the council before moving on to building and safety, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize, I had my chat box closed, so I didn't see that. Are there any questions from council members at this time? Okay, thank you. We're ready for the next section.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. My name's Andrew Stuffer. I'm the building official for the city, and I manage the Building and Safety Division. Next slide, please. We're going to talk about three programs. This is the first of the three programs. It's our building inspection and code enforcement programs. These are the individuals and professionals that you see out in the field conducting inspections and investigations. A lot of people think of a construction inspector as someone who goes out and checks for foundations and framing and exit doors, and we do that. However, we do a lot more. We also go out and confirm flood and earthquake resiliency. We look at energy code compliance for energy conservation, for heating and ventilating and air conditioning systems, as well as lighting systems. We look at stormwater treatment systems during construction to make sure that the We look at stormwater treatment systems during construction to make sure that the construction sites are doing a good job of keeping the stormwater clean. And we also inspect those permanent stormwater systems that will retain that will be retained on site and clean the water for the life of the project. And lastly, and pretty, pretty importantly, we are involved in civil rights, which is kind of an odd thing for a building inspector, you'd think. And that is through the enforcement of the state and federal accessibility regulations for physically disabled. And as you've heard, as we hear from the community, this trying to confirm compliance with the disabled accessibility regulations that the state and federal government publish is complicated. And it's really difficult for existing buildings sometimes. So our building inspectors do a very good job of going out and confirming compliance with the approved plans. And making sure that the building owner and the business owners liabilities are limited through confirmation of compliance with these standards. Our code enforcement program is limited just to building code enforcement. In the city here, we have multiple code enforcement programs within the different departments. So this is just, these are just three professionals who address building violations, violations of the building standards. We're not, we're not proactive, that we're purely reactive. So members of the public will call us or email us and let us know they have a concern, work without permit or illegal occupancy or something that concerns them, they think is a building code violation and we will send a professional out. And those certified professionals will confirm whether or not there's a violation. If there is, they'll document that violation properly so that that can stand up in court if needed. But we desire to try to facilitate compliance without having to go to court or without issuing a citation. Voluntary compliance is our goal. However, you know, we are in the business of making sure we have a duty to confirm that compliance is obtained. And the violations are abated. So sometimes we do have to issue citations and civil penalties. And sometimes we work with the city attorney's office on legal remedies as well. Next slide please. So this program does a lot of really good work. As you can see by the numbers, just this fiscal year, we've conducted more than 14,000 building inspections, looking at grading, structural life, safety. All those elements that I just discussed in the prior slide. We've conducted more than 1,400 investigations and follow up inspections in our code enforcement program. And this unit also is involved in doing specialty plan check for electrical, mechanical plumbing and code enforcement as part of our building permit process. And they completed more than 800 plan reviews this year. Very busy work unit. This year was a much busier year than last year and even busier than the year before that. Next slide please. So here's the second of the three programs in building and safety are records, archive and clerical services unit. We call them RACs. Great, a great team there that's headed up by Brenda Nielsen. I should mention that the building inspection and code enforcement program is headed up by Tim Dunn, supervisor there does a great job. Brenda is the supervisor for our records, archives and clerical services unit. And here is where we make an archive, a record, a permanent record for public viewing of the activities that occur in the building and planning processes. As we'll see in the next slide, this is a, there's a lot of volume of documents and images that we manage. But we we retain these records, we prepare them for to be retained in an organized manner. We make them, most of them are many of them accessible via the web for the public to view. The building plans, the state prohibits us from doing that, but we do, we have the building plans available now. Even in the COVID-19 scenario, we have them now available in our office to view. And we do, we provide cash sharing services for planning, building and public works here at the six thirty Garden Street Building. Next slide please. So to give you an idea of the volume of work that this work unit handles. So far, they've processed more than 125,000 record images. And those were, most of those this year were hard copy paper that had to be scanned, put into a folder. And then uploaded into an imaging system, all with the quality control that's necessary to preserve a good public record. They've filled more than 6,000 requests for public access to the records to be able to view those records and see what decisions have been made in the past on a property. And they facilitated the collection of more than $5 million of transactions from the six thirty Garden Street lobby functions. Next slide please. Here's the third of the three programs in building and safety. It's our building counter and plan review services. These are the individuals that are public interfaces with here in our office when they have questions about a building permit. Are obtaining an over the counter permit or going through the plan review process. That these eleven and a quarter employed professionals. They they're doing, they're confirming compliance in the office on the plans for the very items that the building inspectors are going to be checking out in the field. So that includes energy conservation, green building, electrical code, plumbing code, mechanical code, building code. Compliance with the accessibility provisions of the state and federal laws and federal floodplain management regulations as well as state historic building code regulations. There are, it is complex. There are a lot of facets to the work that they do. On top of that, this group also facilitates the confirmation of compliance with all the other departments that are involved in land development teams. So that the, this is the group that makes sure that the plans are routed to the appropriate. Excuse me. This is the, this is the group that facilitates the confirmation of compliance with these other land development team departments. And that includes planning and zoning, fire prevention, public works engineering, public works transportation, public works water conservation, landscape design, public works water, public work sewer. Environmental services for trash and recycling collection, code enforcement and creeks. So there are a lot of things that they have to facilitate, a lot of reviews that they have to facilitate in the permit process. Besides completing those reviews for the state standards that we're responsible for. And once they finish all of that, then they'll issue the building permit. And we facilitated all of these services thousands of times this year. Next slide please. So here's, here's how many times we've served over 3,000 customers through our public permit counter. On permit applications or on our new online system. 2,100 of those permit approvals were facilitated. We issued permits for those this year, 2,100. We did 3,000 plan reviews in building and safety, not not counting all the other departments and divisions that are involved in the building permit process, but we conducted 3,000 plan reviews and of those 2,400 of them were on time. Next slide please. Oh, I should add 1,500 of those of those plan reviews that we did, half of them were approvals that were granted. No corrections needed. So our accomplishments, I summarize these to try to be expedient. We improved our stakeholder outreach this year. I made efforts with my our staff to reach out to the AIA Santa Barbara. The Contractors Association for Santa Barbara. And we utilized the land development team bulletin system to get word out to stakeholders. So they understood what was happening, especially during the COVID-19 change, process changes that we had. We completely converted in about three weeks, we completely converted from a paper system to a 100% online and digital system. That included 100% virtual inspections as well. It was a very difficult three weeks. It was extremely hard, I think, on our customers. I know it was hard on us. We could see what was happening and we could see the progress, but our customers, there was a three week period where they were in the dark. We were letting them know we were converting, but you know, they weren't seeing progress. So that's hard, you know, when you've, when you've got a lot of money on the line and your your interest in your application is high and you're not seeing, you know, progress on the plan reviews while we're doing this conversion. That was a difficult time and we're still getting feedback from customers. Who are, you know, they're frustrated because we lost three weeks there during that time, but we're 100% digital. And it is going to help us. We're already seeing benefits and being more efficient and more timely in our reviews. Prior to that though, looking at the statistics, one of our P3 goals was to reduce the number of rounds of plan check that our customers have to endure before they get their permit. That was, that's one of the common themes that we hear from our customers is why do we, you know, why can't we get an approval? We get a correction, I gotta resubmit, it goes all the way around. I gotta wait, you know, I have to wait three weeks again, two weeks for my corrections to be looked at and I have to do that over and over again. So we reduced those number of rounds from about 3.2 to two and a half. And that's, we're still not where we want to be, you know, ideally, we want to be able to approve plans when they're submitted to us. That is the goal. I don't know how realistic that goal is for all projects. There are a lot of details that need to be checked. But wouldn't it be wonderful if the most rounds of review we ever saw a project go through was three? Or two, you know, on the average would be wonderful. That would greatly shorten the amount of time it takes to process permits. So we're, we're going to continue to work towards that goal. We made obviously some significant progress towards permit system completion. You know, we, we went live with Acela in April of 2019, sorry, March of 2019. And we're, you know, we're still cleaning up there. That was a expeditious launch and we knew we were going to have a lot of cleanup items. We're still working through that and we're making really good progress this year. I'm seeing a lot more efficiencies in our operations. But it is slow going when staff is doing the work. This is work that I'm doing along with Danny Cotto and Adam Hendel from Public Works. And Jim Austin from the fire department. It's, these are not our normal duties. So it's, it does take us quite a bit of time. But we want to keep moving forward on that and we've made some good progress. I also want to note that we've, we've made a conscious effort to improve our coordination with the city attorney's office. And their, you know, newer code enforcement program and code enforcement support. One of the things we realized when, when William and Danny Way came on board with the city attorney's office was hey, you know, they're responding now. We, we, we need to make sure our documents are in good shape. And so Tim Dunn in that code enforcement unit has done a great job working with his staff to to get our documentation in really good order so that William and Danny can be very effective when when needed. Next slide please. So things that we considered in this budget submittal, the NOVAC recommendations we had in hand just before we made this budget submittal and it was encouraging to see that when, while we hadn't had an idea based on statistics that we needed another building inspector in order to satisfy the demand from the construction community. We, we kind of knew that in January because we could see the volume of inspections that were being requested. That was validated in the NOVAC report. So that was good to see. So that is included in the fiscal year 21 budget. The business advisory task force items are important. They are not included currently in the budget. Some of them will have a budget impact more than others, but we are committed to evaluating these and returning to council with an idea of what types of budget impacts these might have. And with that, I think I'm turning it back over to James. Unless there's questions. James, were you going to speak on these?
No, this is addressed in the COVID-19 section. So actually, we're going to move on to the review.
And I don't see any, I don't see any questions. So thank you, Mr. Stuffer. Mr. Hamilton.
Okay, I'm going to step aside and let the city planner come in.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm happy to be here. I'm Renee Brook, the city planner. I manage the planning division in the community development department. I'm really happy to get this time to share with you everything that we do in the planning division, or at least a lot of what we do in the planning division. So next slide please. We have four sections in the planning division. The first I'll be speaking to is the long range planning and special studies section. This is managed by Dan Gullett, principal planner in our division. We have several planners in this division and their work really focuses on the longer term work, work efforts and the policy work required to maintain and implement the general plan and the local coastal program. And also work on some major ordinance amendments. The general plan establishes the vision for the city's future. It's a 20 year planning document. It was adopted by city council in 2011. So we are about halfway through the life of the general plan. It has hundreds of policies to implement throughout its life and there's no expectation that all of those would be implemented, but we do often every day refer to them in guiding our work efforts and when we review development projects against the policies in the general plan. The general plan has many elements that make up the plan. We do periodically update those elements. For example, the historic resources element was updated since adoption of the general plan. And we are required to update our housing element at least every eight years. Our current housing element goes through the year 2023. Once we work our way through our regional housing needs allocation process in the next year, we will then shift into updating our housing element to to show how that we can produce that housing in the city over the eight year planning period that the housing element has. This program, this section also provides an annual report in terms of sort of assessing how we're doing and implementing our general plan. And also prepares an adaptive management program. And in the past couple of years, that adaptive management program has focused on the average unit size density incentive program. And looking at whether the products, the projects coming out of that program are in alignment with what council intended when they adopted the program. And so as you're all aware, we're going through some major amendments now to that program and it's after having been in place for seven years. This is the natural thing to adjust over this time period. And so staff in this section are working on that work effort. We also track legislation and adopt ordinances to respond to new state legislation, which in the last couple of years has grown in number and become a much bigger part of our work effort. Some examples include the accessory dwelling unit legislation. Lot more legislation focused on enforcement of housing production and housing element, making sure that cities aren't down zoning areas without also up zoning them and then also placing some restrictions on how communities review housing projects. So continually responding to those new laws. This section also provides GIS support to our division and to other departments. Although all and also working with Acela data, maintaining data in our Acela permit tracking system and producing reports for us to be able to produce development statistics that are housed in the Acela program. Next slide please. Thank you. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of workload and performance measures for this section. The big thing we're responsible for every year in order to keep our housing element certified by the state is to submit a report to them every April. That looks at the housing that's been produced in the city and goes through each policy in our housing element and we report where we are in terms of implementing those policies, how we accomplish them, are we working toward them? Are they outdated? Do they need to be updated? So that we did in April. Keeps us in good standing with the state. It allows us to access grant funds and also allows us to prevent having to report to the state or be seen as out of compliance with them and then have other requirements put on top of our review and in terms of housing production. So we have a lot of ongoing work efforts in this section. Like I said, this, these wonderful staff work on really long, longer range projects. So they are multi-year often, including several different amendment rounds to the AUD program. Accessory dwelling unit ordinance amendments. We did amend the city's ordinance a couple of years ago with new legislation. We're in the process of amending it again. Also in the process of adopting objective design standards for housing projects if they meet the criteria for Senate Bill 35, which is a very streamlined approval process. Also in the middle of preparing our sea level rise adaptation plan, we were just on the brink of releasing that, presenting that to city council and releasing it to the public right when COVID-19 really hit the community and so we didn't feel it was the right time to engage in that discussion with the community. So we put that on hold for So we put that on hold for a little bit. And we also provide Acela administration support, as I mentioned, we have staff in the long-range planning section that report out a lot of data that's housed in the Acela permit tracking system, and so there's often some fine tuning and data cleanup that needs to be done when we're doing those reports. Next slide, please. So the next section I'll speak to is the Development and Environmental Review section. This section is supervised by Alison Debusk and has case planners in it as well as our environmental analysts in the division. So these planners work on the more complex mixed-use and non-residential projects that require planning commission review and often city council action. They, their workload also includes a lot of city projects, including the Ortega Park Master Plan, the new police station, a lot of bridge replacement projects over the years, and the Cabrillo Pavilion. They also manage many projects that go to the staff hearing officer, there's a fair number of coastal development permits and modification applications that go to the staff hearing officer, and so case planners in this section will manage those. The planners in this section are also consulted quite often by developers or property owners or permit expeditors doing due diligence and wanting to understand the development process for a project that they might be pursuing or property that they might want to purchase and understand any major pitfalls from a planning perspective before they go in and invest a lot of money. So these are done through planner consultations or pre-application services, so a lot of work going on in this section in that regard. Next slide, please. So a couple of highlights for this section to, for this last fiscal year, the one we're about to wrap up. This section carries out our development application review team process, they are the managers of that process. The case planners in the Development and Environmental Review section, and that process has been in place for over 20 years. It came out of the Green Book process, you might have heard other people refer to that. I think in the mid late 90s, there was a really hard look at our land development process, and it was determined we needed to have a much more coordinated review of these development applications. So the DART process is what we call it. Case planners lead this process, but during their 30-day review of these development applications, they are routed to multiple other divisions and departments, including several sections of Public Works, Fire, Building and Safety, Environmental Services, and Creeks. And they all do their review, and then they come together, try to work out any conflicting comments or issues, and then issue a letter to the applicant, and then they have a follow-up meeting with the applicant to walk through their comments and determine what else is needed in order to make the application complete. So we had 45 of those types of projects that went through review in this last year. And we are mandated to provide comments to the applicants within 30 days, that's the State Permit Streamlining Act, when it's a formal application, so we did that every time. So we had very timely review of those 45 DART applications, in addition to that, we have pre-application review. And this is sometimes optional and sometimes not, it depends on the application type. But many times applicants will want to submit preliminary information to the city. It goes through that same review of being routed to all the different departments and divisions, and they give their input. It's, it's a much cheaper fee to go through this, we, usually the projects are much less developed, so it's conceptual in nature. But again, it gives the applicant an opportunity to see if there's any major red flags before they invest more in the project. And so we completed 20 of those in this last fiscal year and did those within six weeks, that's our goal with those, if they're voluntary PRTs. Also, between our environmental analysts and other planners in this section, we provided over 630 hours of environmental service to both private and, private applicants and city applicants. So we are consulted quite often by Public Works and Parks and Recreation when they have their capital projects and they need to go through environmental review, and so we provide that service to them, much like a consultant would to a private development. And then in terms of our work with the Planning Commission, we held not only our regular meeting agendas with development applications, but also quite a few discussions and work sessions and trainings with them in this last year. Next slide, please. So the third section is zoning information, plan check and enforcement, and this is supervised by Danny Cotto. The primary duties of this section are zoning plan check and managing the staff and the activities at the public planning counter. Also in this section, we fulfill the duties of the staff hearing officer that is held by Susan Riordan. She's also a senior planner in the division, and she's been in that position for, gosh, I want to say 10 years or so, and doing a great job. That process, the staff hearing officer position was created in 2006, and it was meant to streamline some of the more minor projects. So until the staff hearing officer was created, all these discretionary projects that needed to go through the 30-day review had to go the Planning Commission for a decision, so Planning Commission agendas were getting full, meetings were getting long, and it's a lengthier process to get on those agendas, and so we created the staff hearing officer in 2006. She holds meetings every other week and handles the more minor application types, some minor coastal development permits, accessory dwelling units in the coastal zone, as well as modifications. So when someone's requesting relief from the zoning ordinance, they can request a modification, and that's the bulk of the workload that the staff hearing officer hears and makes decisions on. We also, staff in this section also investigate complaints and manage enforcement cases involving zoning issues or signs. And like Mr. Stuffer said, same thing in the zoning code enforcement world, we are reactive in nature. We reply to complaints that we receive, the only time that we are proactive is if we want to be fair. If we receive a lot of complaints about prohibited signs, let's say on one section of State Street, and we want to have a somewhat equal playing field in the community, we will look to the other side as well and try to have, like I said, have a level playing field, so we're not just picking on a certain business because we happen to receive a complaint about it. So that's the only time that we'll be proactive unless we're made aware of some, you know, health and safety issue that we absolutely need to act on. So also, for over 20 years, two of our higher-level staff in this section have helped maintain our permit tracking software. Prior to Acela, it was TideMark, prior to that, it was PermitPlan. So for that reason, they were highly involved in the transition from TideMark to Acela, and still spend a significant amount of their time continuing to implement Acela and create reports and write scripts to make Acela more functional for us and try to mirror what TideMark did in terms of user friendliness. Obviously, Acela is a lot more complicated too, and has a lot more capabilities, so trying to make those most functional. So this is why we hope to transition those duties to information technology, so I can have those two higher-level planners in the zoning section return to their primary duties, one of those is Danny Cotto, which is the supervisor of this section. So it's been difficult to have him and his time divided between zoning duties and what is largely an IT function. So next slide, please. Some highlights for the zoning section in this last fiscal year. They completed 3,200 zoning plan checks, so these, so not every plan that comes in through the building counter needs to get routed to zoning for review. There are some that clearly don't involve any zoning ordinance compliance, and so those don't land on our desk. But for those that do, we completed 3,200 of those, and 72% of those were within the timeline set out in our P3s. Also, not included in that 3,200 figure is, staff in this section also provide the zoning compliance review for all the projects that go through our design review process. So prior to a formal action on a project, so we don't have the statistics here, but you'll see in a couple of slides, we have over 600 designer review applications that come in on a typical year. So that's a lot of extra duties that we've added to the zoning staff, but what we found is it's much better to do that review upfront prior to an action on a design review project than what was happening was we were finding these compliance issues when we were doing the building permit plan check. So we front-loaded that review process now, and we started that last March in 2019. And again, while it has added additional work at the front end of our design review application process, we have seen that when projects do come in through for a building permit review, it's much faster and requires less resubmittals, because we have the same person doing this zoning review from the time the application comes in the counter through building permit issuance. And so they're familiar with the project, and so that's been really successful, but it has added work to the zoning staff. We've also resolved 700 code enforcement cases this year. Code enforcement staffing levels vary throughout the year, when we're understaffed, which we have been this year in the planning division, we often pull those enforcement officers away from their primary duties to help out in other ways, and we've been doing that since March this year. So we've not been able to meet our targets for investigating high-priority cases within 10 days, our target is 80%. Again, as I said, we provide significant support to the Acela implementation in this section, and at the public counter assisted 10,000 customers. And that's not unique customers, that's 10,000 people walking in the door, so it could be, you know, the same person coming in multiple times a week, but it's still a lot of customer interaction, both in person and on the phone. And next slide, please. So the last section of the planning division is the Designer View and Historic Preservation section, and this is supervised by Irma Unsweta. And I do want to note the FTEs in this section include three commission secretaries. They provide the administrative support to our boards and commissions, work very closely with our design review staff, so that's reflected in this slide as well. And let's see, so the majority of the staff in this section are liaison to our four design review boards, which is Architectural Board of Review, the Historic Landmarks Commission, Single Family Design Board, and the Sign Committee. So they review the development projects and make sure that the projects are accurately described in all the application materials, that they have adequate information to be presented to the design boards for productive hearing. They prepare the description that goes out in the public notice and the meeting agenda. And they attend all the designer view meetings throughout, for these four design boards, and provide guidance and answer questions of the board and commission members and the public and the applicants throughout the hearing. This section also includes our urban historian, who leads implementation of our Historic Preservation Work Program, including amendments to our Historic Resources Ordinance, which is underway right now, working closely with our City Attorney's Office. She also regularly works with the HLC to designate historic resources and provides professional and technical support to the HLC and applicants. Nicole Hernandez is our urban historian, she also manages the Mills Act program. That's a program that was adopted by City Council about seven or eight years ago. It's a program that, when property owners enter into the program, they enter into a contract with the city and, and lay out a restoration plan, so if they have, they own a historic resource, they lay out a 10-year restoration plan for the property. And in exchange for that, they get a break on their property taxes. So the theory is that the break on the property taxes, that money is reinvested into the property. Usually the money they, they invest in the property far exceeds the break they get, but it's a nice incentive. We have 35 of those contracts currently that Nicole manages. And then staff in this section all provide a significant support to our public counter. And then, next slide, please. So some highlights for the Designer View and Historic Preservation section this last year. As I mentioned, we've received about 680 designer review applications, so that's across the four different design boards. About half of those were scheduled for action within 30 days. And so designer review applications are subject to the same permit streamlining act as the development review projects. So we have to do our 30-day review prior to scheduling a project for an action. Projects can go through concept review at our design boards without that 30-day review, because they're working, the applicants working through the design with the designer review board, but once it's ready for action, then we need to make sure that we have all the complaint information that meets the code prior to the design board taking in action, because we don't want to approve a project that then later we find out doesn't meet the zoning ordinance in some way. So that's a reason why not all projects are scheduled for action within 30 days. The ones that are, are some of the more minor projects, they might be on the consent agenda, but at least half are larger projects that might need a couple of reviews by the design board before it's ready for action, or we might have received incomplete materials that made the project not ready to agendize for action. Nicole Hernandez completed 130 historic resource evaluations this last year. She does those, when usually, in most cases, the projects are referred to her through the building permit review process, but they might also reach out to Nicole prior to submitting an application. And if it looks like the structure is over 50 years old and there's significant changes being proposed to the structure, Nicole needs to evaluate it to make sure that the changes don't have a significant adverse impact to the historic resource. So she'll perform those, when they're more complex or the resource is of higher status, then those go to the HLC for review, and a consultant prepares a historic structures analysis. Nicole does a lot of the, the other ones that don't go to the HLC. As I mentioned, she also manages 35 Mills Act contracts. We were successful in holding a comprehensive training for all of our design boards last fall, and I don't recall in my history here ever having done that. So that was a really successful work effort with Irma and Tava Ostringer and other staff in the Designer View section to pull all the design board members together and go through meeting protocol and purview, and that was really helpful to be able to answer their questions all at the same time. And then, although I don't consider it a success necessarily, it is a factor of workload that we did present six appeals to City Council this last year generated from our designer review boards. Next slide, please. So I'm going to close out with just some overall accomplishments from the division. Just like Building and Safety, when we hit the COVID-19 pandemic, we needed to keep working. So we transitioned to electronic planning applications submittals at the same time as building permit applications. We weren't initially going to do that, we first wanted to transition to building permit applications online and kind of work through the kinks of that, and then figure out how we could apply that toward our planning applications. But turns out, it was time to do it all at once, so we did that. Still working through some bugs on that, but largely really successful. Got to give a lot of credit to Danny Cotto on working through all that. Also this last year, we appointed an existing project planner and designer view to perform a business liaison duties. And this is Mark Aguilar, he's been doing a great job, long history with the city, really good at facilitating communication between applicants, property owners, architects, city staff, and if a project is hitting a hangup or there's just miscommunication, he'll jump in and facilitate the discussion, he also is proactive. If he's hearing about something that might be going on in the community, then he reaches out to people and tries to facilitate those projects. So it did reassign my existing project planner and designer view in order to carry out these duties, but overall been really successful just to have that liaison that's familiar with all the divisions and departments to provide that sort of umbrella of knowledge. As I mentioned, we assign staff to designer view projects from start to finish, so that's the zoning staff that's involved from day one, application intake through building permit issuance, they're working hand-in-hand with the designer view staff to do the zoning plan check on all these projects. So that has, we've been doing that for about a year, and it's taken some time to see the efficiency in that. But as I mentioned, we're, once these projects are coming in- But as I mentioned, we're, once these projects are coming in for building permit review, we're seeing less resubmittals on those projects and faster approval turnaround. Also happy to report, we just secured $310,000 grant from the state to update our general plan EIR. It's not a fun and sexy project, but it's necessary. When city council adopted the general plan in 2011, along with it was a program EIR. Again, it's been about 10 years. We rely on that EIR very heavily to streamline the environmental review for all the development projects that come in under the policies of the general plan. It's time to update some sections of the EIR so that we can continue to rely on it for the remaining 10 years of the general plan's life. So we'll be doing that over the next couple of years. I believe we'll be getting our funds in the next couple of months. We resumed work on the historic resource ordinance. This is something we've long been wanting to do and it's been happening in fits and starts. Finally, just so thankful that we've had dedicated staff from the city attorney's office to help us on this. It's well underway now with Greg Lucitana and Nicole Hernandez and working our way through HLC and then onto planning commission soon. Designated 54 structures of merit and the city council designated two city landmarks this last year. We completed some minor amendments to the AD program and now we're in the midst of some more major program amendments. And we are recognized as a certified local government this last year. That's a recognition bestowed by the National Park Service and we work closely with the state historic preservation office to carry out the responsibilities. Now that we're a certified local government, it allows us access to grants. It does require that we report more of our activities to the state to maintain compliance with that certification. But it's a great honor. Next slide, please. And then I think I'm closing out my section to cover some recommendations that came out of a NOVAC study. Two related to designer view. One was to designate a lead designer view planner. So a more senior staff that could be available to the designer view boards for some higher level policy questions or direction. Lately, more than lately, well over a year, we've had Assistant City Attorney Tava Ostringer attending the HLC and ABR meetings to provide that support. And she's been doing a great job, but really more of our, our needs on a day-to-day basis are a higher level planner who can help guide the design boards in their purview, not so much from a legal perspective, from a, from a policy and ordinance perspective. And so we recognize that that would have a budgetary impact to add that planner to the designer view section. And also recommendation of NOVAC was that the designer view staff prepare staff reports, written reports to the design boards to help just lay out the groundwork for their review of these projects. That I believe we could do in-house with existing staff once the division is fully staffed. We have five vacancies in the division. Three of them are in the designer view section. So I would need to take that on when we have adequate staffing. So I believe this closes up my section of the presentation. I will hand it back to James Hamilton.
Hi, Mr. Hamilton. We have a couple of staff or council questions for Ms. Brooke, it looks like. Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Brooke, you, you mentioned throughout your presentation about the NOVAC suggestions, but you also talked about customer engagement and, you know, the 10,000 customer engagement and the 630 hours of environmental resource that you, your department gave. And I'm sure you're aware of the community complaints. So what would you do better to make your department more effective, to run more effectively?
So that's a fair question. Um, excuse me, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. That's a really fair question. It's probably not a short one, but I'll try to be brief. We've been undergoing a lot of change in the last couple of years, whether it's responding to state law, requiring ordinance amendments, or trying to carry out other policy directives, whether it's from the council or the general plan. And so in combination with having some longer term work efforts, we've had a significant amount of staff turnover in the last couple of years and that's recognized in the NOVAC study. Loss of institutional knowledge through retirements of higher level staff. Bringing on a lot of newer staff that have a great energy, but that do need training and don't have the same institutional knowledge and the ability to make decisions based on judgment. So there's, there's a need for more training. And I recognize that I need to dedicate more time to staff training and staff retention. And it's been through retirements, promotions, transfers to other divisions or departments that we've seen this turnover in the planning division. And while I don't have control over that, I, I can have control over making sure staff are adequately trained and able to do their job and act with more independence and, and good judgment so that decisions can be made more quickly.
My second question will be my final question. Two of the things that you just mentioned, the report also highlighted. What do you do as a head of this department to have a communication with your staff? Do you meet monthly? Do you have, you know, yearly workshops? What do you do to keep your staff up to date? Their morale up? What type of team building do you do with your staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. Another great question. So we have weekly division meetings. So every Wednesday morning, the entire planning division gets together and we've carried those on now through go to meeting. So that's all hands on, division-wide meeting. And we, in that 45 minutes or so, I did brief what happened at city council, any major work efforts or policy direction. We also go around the room and talk about what's going on in each of the sections, whether it's a major work effort or a development project that people should be aware of because they might receive questions. We talk about updated policies and procedures at the meeting. And then each of my four sections has their own section meeting every other week. So they dig deeper into their more section specific work and talk about day-to-day activities and what's going on and what can be improved. And so it filters down from me through my supervisors to their sections and those section meetings. But in the division meeting, that's when we're all together and we could talk about all sorts of things. Sometimes we do talk about morale in the division. Just what's going on? How are people feeling? How are they doing? Especially in this time when we're working remotely and people are feeling disconnected. It's been really important for us to have those meetings. And so, yeah, I try to inspire my staff just to be a good role model.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I actually have a number of questions, most of them relate to Ms. Brooke. Would you like me to wait till the whole presentation's done and come back? Because it could take about 10 minutes and some of the questions I have. She's covered a lot of these, but I'm happy to ask them now. Or would you like me to wait?
No, go ahead and ask them now. The other sections have a different focus and let's stay with this theme. Thank you.
Ms. Brooke, thank you for that. I was going to start with others, but to piggyback on, on that, one of the bullet points I had in my notes was how is staff morale and what is being done to, to train staff? So you mentioned that you do provide training, but what types of training is available now? And what do you see as a need in terms of training to empower staff to be able to make those judgment calls that currently they're not able to because of their, they're newer to the organization, don't have that institutional knowledge?
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman. So what I have planned for training, my, my vision for training, I haven't been able to carry out because, because of the vacancies. And I have staff currently assigned to positions that are, you know, we're trying to just get by. So it's been, it's been challenging for that reason. Morale has been challenged at times because while they want to help out, they want to support the division, they also don't feel like they can necessarily, you know, carry out the full duties of their position because they've been asked to do something for a temporary basis. We're trying to cover vacancies. So I haven't been able to carry out the full vision of my training. I did just last year, council approved a reclassification to create a planning analyst position. It's administrative analyst. The working title is planning analyst here. Ellen Kokenda, who, one of her primary duties will be to develop a training program for the division. Other things have happened though, and she's been more or less moderating board and commission meetings for the last couple of months. So I haven't been able to work on that as much, but she is, when she does have time, is working on that as well as working on our out-facing information on our website, trying to make that more user-friendly. But so my vision for training is that people would feel fully able to make independent decisions and feel good about them, use their professional judgment, not feel that they, you know, if they do make a mistake, it's okay. Well, you know, we make mistakes. We apologize and then we help to the extent we can to move forward quickly from there. But it would be great to be able to have a training manual for each of the sections and have staff be able to refer to that until they feel confident to make decisions on their own. But we have a really just a really easy informal atmosphere in the planning division where people can just walk across the hallway and ask their colleague for advice on something. And a lot of coordination meetings within sections and across sections on issues. So there is an opportunity for people to consult with other planners. So I would like though to have training manuals for each of our positions or, you know, primary section duties that they could refer to until they, they feel like they can act independently.
Thank you. That's encouraging that there is a plan in place. It, it's just the timing hasn't been right and that the position that was created is actually addressing that because I think that will go a long way. I'll try to go through these and this kind of gets into the issue, I think, of vacancies and reassignments, but it gets to the DART process. I have a couple of questions on that. In the NOVAC report, it stated that some staff don't always participate in the, in the DART process. And do you think that's an accurate assessment? And how can we improve just the communication upfront as part of the DART process through the different departments that need to participate?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman. So it is an accurate statement. There is varied participation among divisions and departments in the DART working meetings and applicant meetings. I think in large part, it's due to the workload in other divisions and departments. But also, we haven't had a reinvestment in our land development process in many years. So I mentioned in my presentation, the Green Book, that was an audit of our land development process in the late 90s, developed this green book that laid out the DART process as we know it today. We haven't had a coming together of all the land development staff since I think maybe 2004 to sort of make sure everybody's on the same page about the importance of the land development team services and that if it's a priority for all the divisions and departments, if it's a priority for the city to dedicate resources and make this, you know, the attendance at meetings more important than other duties, then we need that reinvestment in the process and staff time to that because we're all obviously getting pulled in a lot of directions. So it's really just policy directive. If this is your highest priority, then that's what we need to kind of gather around. And I'm really looking forward to the process improvement exercise for that reason because that'll be staff-driven. It'll cause, you know, buy-in to whatever processes are created out of that exercise.
You just answered one of my questions already. I was going to ask what your expectation is of the process improvement exercise and it sounds like you have high expectations in allowing the staff to communicate in a way that hasn't been done, it looks like quite some years. To follow up on the DART as part of the intake process itself, on page three of the NOVAC report, it is noted that it's inconsistent. And, and sometimes the staff time is spent assessing completely later in the project. However, some staff, I'm kind of paraphrasing here, do provide guidance to customers upon submittal that are incomplete. So the question I have is from the, the process itself. Is there an inconsistency there? And then is there a way to fix it so that the, the expectation and the process is consistent from applicant to applicant? And then, and then also that when a project is not, is submitted and it's not complete, that it's identified at that point because it goes on to say in the report here that sometimes it's accepted and then on the second round of review, then it's determined incomplete. Are those accurate in your, of what you're observing? And is there a plan to make the process more consistent upfront and determine whether or not a project is complete upfront before, once submitted rather than later on?
Right. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Friedman. So there's a couple of things going on with that recommendation. I think if I understood which one you're referring to correctly. So you might recall Jonathan Ingram in his presentation last week said that our process has become more complex largely because we've tried to facilitate or help applicants or the projects have all the information before an action is taken. Even so, we might help or try to facilitate a project getting on a design board agenda because they just, you know, the applicant just wants to get that initial feedback from the design board. And that's fine. We have the conceptual review stage for projects to do that. And we don't do an application completeness review at that stage because they are conceptual. They could change, so we don't want to keep doing this thorough review every time if we think the project will change through the designer view process. So we try to wait until the board indicates that they are ready to take an action. Then the next time the application is submitted, we'll do this very thorough 30-day review. So that's our more formal process that we've instituted for about the last year for designer view projects. But again, I think not, it's not unique to just the planning division, but other land development sections that we will try to accommodate requests when we think we can help facilitate development. What happens sometimes though is that then there's an expectation by the applicant that their project is maybe further along or more complete than it really is. And so then we get into this uncomfortable discussion of, well, we were trying to help. We took it in, but it's not ready. So it's, it can, so you know, the, the opposite of that would be to have a very rigid structure where we would just turn people away from the counter if it didn't have, you know, everything on all these checklists. It'd be very predictable, but it would be rigid. And so there's a trade-off or there's a balance there. We've, over years, become more of, we want to facilitate, so we'll help. But that can make the process seem complicated or unpredictable because it's not rigid. So this is something that I think through the process improvement exercise, staff can help define and also through direction from your council, where the priorities are for the land development process. How flexible do we want to be? Are there ordinances that need to be changed to help facilitate the policy direction of the council? Because we'll do, we'll do whatever we need to do. If it's clear that, you know, we want to lean on rigidity and predictability or flexibility and, you know, just it's more, it'll be more handholding and, and customer time.
Thank you. I think you raised some, some good issues there that are for us to consider at council because we've heard we want you to be more rigid, more predictable, but also have more flexibility. And I think out of the, the process improvement exercise, there might be some good feedback on how we can improve communication with the project applicants so they understand what the level of acceptance the staff has given to that point and so that they don't go beyond their expectations. Of course, you saying no good dink goes unpunished, so that's a, there. But I think this all gets back into training as well that you were mentioning. I have just a couple more questions. And I think you kind of answered that in this one, the more training, the process improvement exercise. Then my next question was, what can we do to hold accountable project applicants that submit bad or incomplete projects? You kind of discussed on that. And is there anything you want to add to that? Or it seems like you kind of covered how we can work on the submittals or incomplete projects.
Councilmember Friedman, the only thing I would add is that we would be interested in having more transparency, I think, in our process so that it's clear to everybody what's going on with projects throughout the review. And so I know one thing we want to work on soon is having more of that data available on our website. And it would mean working through some Acela reporting that anybody could do at going on our website and pulling statistics like that. So we wouldn't have to guess, you know, when someone says a project took this long from this point to this point, we could, we could, or anybody could go in and run a report and see, okay, that, you know, the staff spent this long doing this, they rejected the application, okay, it was resubmitted. It took this long to review again. I'd love to have that transparency. So that also could just tell the story too about where there might be hang-ups in the process too.
And my last question that goes to the design review boards. And in particular, there's a mention of thresholds of when a project would come back to a design review board. And if we established thresholds, it might, it might not trigger going back to the board. Can you clarify what, what that kind of process you're looking at is or what the thresholds are and who defines them? And is there a process that we're looking at right now to identify when a project would need to go back for some of these minor things that might not need, so need to go back?
Right, right. Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Friedman. So that was mentioned in NOVAC study that projects might be sent back to the design review board even after they receive final approval because either maybe through the permitting process or even out in the field during construction, there's changes to the structure or the site in some way. And so right now, it's through our municipal code. It's in Title 22 and then the guidelines for each of the boards and commissions that dictate what triggers designer view. So that's in the municipal code. There's certain thresholds for every design board where a project is required to go to the design board. Also, within that are different thresholds for which projects require a mailed public notice or not. And then in the guidelines for each of the design boards, we are granted administrative authority to approve some minor changes to, or minor exterior changes. So it would be through those guidelines too if we wanted to have additional project elements that could be approved at the staff level rather than having to go back to the design board. So those are the two implementing aspects of the design board.
So it would be the, it would be the guidelines, which would be something we could look at that would be a less resource-intensive endeavor than the municipal code itself. Providing that. Okay. Thank you. You've answered all my questions. I really appreciate your thoroughness on the responses.
Thank you.
Ms. Gutierrez, go ahead and thanks.
I have a question and a request. So my, my question is, how do you plan to make the changes that the NOVAC report and the grand jury report has requested, which are vital changes? And I think these are changes that I personally want to see and I know a couple of community members want to see. And with this recession that we're faced, if you don't get any funding, have you thought of how you're going to implement these changes?
Madam Mayor, I might ask if Director George Buell could assist in providing a response simply because it involves more than just the planning division. But I'm happy to respond how I can in terms of the planning division, but I don't want to misspeak if there's a department-wide approach to addressing the response to the grand jury.
Sure, but before we go to Mr. Buell, Ms. Gutierrez, we still have public comment. So if you have deliberative comments or like you said, you had a request, okay.
This will be my last one.
Okay, Mr. Buell.
All right, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, Alejandro Gutierrez. Your, your questions are very, very good with respect to the grand jury report. At this time, we're still going through that and we will be bringing back responses to each of the requested areas that the grand jury requested us to provide response back to. We will be doing that. We have until, I believe it's August 28th to respond and we'll be getting those responses to the council before it goes back to the grand jury. The issues that they raise, some of them are very good and we will be prepared to provide comprehensive answers to those at that time. With regards to setting this up for success in terms of the budget questions that we, the budget requests that we have here today. Obviously, we want to be in step with the city council in terms of how we respond to our customers, how we facilitate and how we work with our customers in order to get their projects to a place where a decision can be made. Sometimes the decision will be in favor of the applicant, other times it might not. But we really need to get the, the, the question to the design board or to the decision maker as efficiently as possible. And so it's working through the, the issues that were identified by the NOVAC group. I have, I have very high expectation that the process improvement exercise that taking place later this month will be very informative and I look forward to providing the, the final report from NOVAC that demonstrates how that can be done. Because at that point, you'll see that the line staff that are doing the work that are responsible for carrying out the, the, the vision that's established and how that's done, that'll be described in the final report. And what exactly that's going to contain, I don't know yet. We're, we're, we're setting it up for, you know, for, for that to occur. And then, like I said, we'll be reporting back to you. Did that answer your questions?
I'll just wait to when you report back.
Okay.
Thank you both. So, oh, Mr. Buell, so it's Mr. Hamilton to talk about the fee changes.
Yes.
Are we ready? Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buell. Thank you, Ms. Brooke. So we're now going to transition into the section of the presentation that's going to focus on the proposed fee changes for fiscal year 2021. I will start with the planning division fee changes and then move on to the building and safety division fee changes. Next slide, please. So to provide a broad overview of the proposed changes in the planning division, there is a reformatting that's taking place in fiscal year 2021 for the fee resolution. Prior to fiscal year 21, the fee resolution was arranged both by application type and approver and sometimes both applicant and staff could find it difficult to locate the appropriate fee. So what we've done in fiscal year 21 is rearrange that fee resolution to have it just organized by kind of broad headers like appeals, design review, coastal plan review. And then beneath those, you'll see specific application fees. And with regard to the fee increases, we're proposing a broad 3% increase just to keep pace with the increase in operational cost. And we'll go into more detail in the coming slides on these bullets. There are, apart from the 3% increase, there are a few other groups of fees that are increases that exist. One is related to the 2019 land development team fee study. And some fees that were, that required a large increase to get to the appropriate cost recovery level are being phased in across three years. Fiscal year 2021 is year two of that increase. There were increases related to two positions that were reclassified and increases were necessary to cover that additional cost as well as a staff analysis that was done to take a look at the fee study and make sure that the time that was estimated for providing the services was still accurate. Staff found that due to some regulatory and procedural changes that more time was required for certain services and there were additional adjustments made to those fees. There were also a few, a number of new fees that are being proposed to be added and those will be detailed in the coming slides. Next slide, please. So with regard to the groups of fees that are in excess of that 3% increase, in 2019, there was a land development team fee study done. And fees that were found to be so far below cost recovery that the required increase to bring them up to the desired level was both more than a $2,500 increase and more than a 50% increase were planned to be phased in across three years. And that was just to mitigate the impact of large fee increases to applicants. As stated, fiscal year 2021 is year two of that three-year phased increase. And just broadly, the types of services that were found to be so far below cost recovery that they required this phased approach were pre-application services, subdivisions, conditional use permits and coastal development permits. Next slide, please. The other two categories of fees that are, that fall outside of that 3% increase are fees necessary to offset reclassification of two planning technicians to associate planners. And this reclassification was done to recognize and increase complexity to the work that they provide. And the fees associated with Historic Landmarks Commission and Architectural Board of Review were adjusted above the 3% to accommodate the increase in salary and benefits associated with the reclassification. And then the other last group of fees beyond that 3% was staff did their analysis to make sure that the time estimated to provide services was still accurate from the land development fee study. And there were certain items where staff found that additional time is being required due to regulatory or procedural changes. Next slide, please. So I'm going to bring the city planner back to just go over the new fees with you. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, James. Renee Brook back here, I just wanted to dive in a little bit deeper on some of the new fees that James mentioned in the planning division fee resolution. First bullet is in response to legislation and streamlining certain housing development projects. They go through a streamlined review process that weren't, that process wasn't reflected in our fee resolution. We couldn't apply our fees that we would otherwise charge to a project the size that might qualify for this type of streamlined review. So we needed to add fees in related to Senate Bill 35, housing projects that might come through and also state density bonus projects that might be coming through. So that's two new fees there. Also, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, Urban Historian does the large majority of our historic resource evaluations for projects going through the planning or the building permit review process. And we did not have a fee for that service. We have a fee for when historic structures report is prepared and presented to the HLC for acceptance. But Nicole Hernandez does over 100 of these reviews throughout the year and we hadn't been charging for that. So we've added a small fee for that service. Also, adding a fee for projects that require more than one staff hearing officer, hearing is just to come into alignment with a fee that we have for planning commission. We just never added one for staff hearing officer. And the rare event that a project wasn't able to be approved or decided on in one hearing and applicant might want to make revisions to the project and return for a second hearing, there is a smaller fee that's charged to account for that staff time preparing a revised staff report and attending hearing. Next slide, please. Some other new fees are requests for exceptions from the sign ordinance. We'd had this fee in the fee resolution for some time. Then we weren't seeing these requests all that often or the ones we were seeing were not that time-intensive and so we weren't charging a fee for those. But then since we removed the fee last year in the fee resolution, we received a lot of these requests for exceptions to the sign ordinance. And they do often take the sign committee more time to review these requests and, and work through these exceptions with the applicant. So we've added a small fee back in for those requests. Also, on some of our more complex, longer-term or longer-range planning services like general plan amendment, specific plans, we have a deposit-based fee where an applicant submits a, a deposit upfront and we draw down from that. As we work on the project, we didn't have that fee in place for when someone might request a change to the city's sphere of influence. We had a request like that come in this last year. And we didn't have a fee to charge them, so we charged an equivalent fee, but we decided we should add one to deal with that specific request. And then oftentimes covenants will be placed on properties, whether it's to recognize off-site parking, off-site trash enclosure access, accessory dwelling unit covenants that have maybe home owner occupancy requirements or primary residency requirements or things like that. Over time, there might be a need to release a property owner of those covenants. And we did not have a fee in our resolution to, to go through that process. We are charged a fee by the county to do that. And so we wanted to be able to pass on the cost of that to the applicant that's requesting that service. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to mention, over the years, through council direction and, and policy, we don't charge full cost recovery for certain of our planning services. One of those is appeals. Allowing access for the majority of our community to avail themselves of the appeal process has been a priority at city council. And so those appeal fees are always significantly under full cost recovery. And so again, that continues in our proposed fee resolution. Also, for accessory dwelling units proposed in the coastal zones, some of those trigger coastal development permit. It's a minor coastal development permit. It still has to go to a public hearing, although it's a fairly expedited process. But the fee is substantially otherwise higher than other accessory dwelling units not in the coastal zone. So we've proposed, and we did last year as well, of cutting that fee in half to still try to facilitate that type of development, but not have it reflect full cost recovery. Also, historic resource evaluations, both those that our urban historian does and the HLC, we are proposing that that remain at 50% of full cost recovery because although those are triggered by an applicant proposing work to their project or to their site, the overall benefit that the community gains from perhaps a designation of a historic resource that comes out of that report or that analysis is a benefit to the entire community to have that research done and that knowledge about that property going forward. I mentioned earlier, the pre-application review team process that our development review case planners oversee. Many of those applications are submitted by applicants on a voluntary basis. It's not required, but again, they want that early indication of any major issues. Those are proposed at about 50% of full cost recovery because we want to encourage that early connection with staff so that we can help them work through any issues or identify major areas that are out of compliance before a lot of time and money is invested. And usually, if they do intend to carry out the project, that helps facilitate faster reviews and, and complete applications down the road. And so we've spent time already looking at the project and can, can in many cases require less time to then do the next DART review. And then the program application fee, it's a, it's a fairly small fee to begin with, but city council had wanted to encourage property owners to participate in the program. And so the application fee for that is about 50% of the time that it takes staff to process the application and present it to city council. Now, next slide, please. And this is why I turn it back to Mr. Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke. We're going to move on to the proposed increases for building and safety now. Broadly, we're proposing an 8% increase for building and safety. Broadly, we're proposing an 8% increase for building and safety. That 8% is made up of three components. The 3% increase to cover increases in operational cost, a proposed 3.5% increase to fund a new building inspector position, and then an additional 1.5% increase to fund half of a proposed Acela administrator position. And we'll get into a little bit more detail on those in the next two slides. Next slide, please. So with regard to the new building inspector position, I worked with the revenue cost specialist, the consultant who put together the land development team fee study. We put the cost of the new position in the fee model that was developed last year and determined that a 3.5% increase in building and safety fees would be required to fund this new position. What are the service enhancements that can be expected from this new position? It's anticipated that the new building inspector will provide 2,000 field inspections. And those 2,000 inspections will serve to improve timeliness of inspections from the current rate of 75% to the P3 goal of 100%. And additionally, we anticipate improvements in specialty plan check, moving from 80% on time to the P3 target of 95% on time. And that would be accomplished by allowing specialty plan check staff to spend more time in the office and not be out doing field inspections. Next slide, please. So the third component of the proposed increases for building and safety is a 1.5% increase to fund the half of an Acela administrator position. This would be a position in the IT fund. Once again, consulted with the revenue cost specialist, put the cost of the new position into the fee model and came back with that 1.5% calculation. The anticipated service enhancements related to this position are to maintain and improve the permit processing system. And as you heard earlier, is to return land development staff to their regular duties and allow them to kind of stop putting so much time into the maintenance of the system. Next slide, please. So if there's no questions, I'm going to move on to the next portion of the presentation. Okay, so I'm just going to give I'm just going to provide a quick two-slide snapshot of the Community Development's general fund budget to show how we went from our proposed plan to our recommended plan and just highlight a few of the mid-cycle adjustments that were made. Next slide, please. So Community Development Department, when our budget was submitted, pre-COVID, this, this was the projection, the first column is where we projected to end the year for expenditures by broadly, by cost category. The second column is the proposed plan, where we started before we made any adjustments. The third column, which is highlighted in red, are the adjustments that we made to come up with our fiscal year 2021 recommended budget, the budget that you have in your budget book. And I'm just going to quickly summarize a few of those changes. So the change in salaries and benefits, that reduction of $42,000 is the aggregation of a whole bunch of different changes. We identified staff in administration who were eligible for funding sources outside of the general fund that moved some money out. We identified a position in planning that was eliminated, permanently eliminated because it previously serviced zoning information reports. And that service and fee was administratively removed by council in July 2019. We added a new building inspector in this recommended position, or the recommended budget, rather. And then we had a few reclassifications and kind of the, the aggregate effect of all that is a $42,000 reduction in salaries and benefits from the proposed plan. And then just highlighting a few of the other large changes. With regard to supplies and services, the major changes there consist of moving between cost categories. We moved $70,000 from supplies and services to the transfer out category. We moved $50,000 between supplies and services to special projects. We made a change to the way that our environmental impact report activity is budgeted. And, and we reduced supplies and services by $50,000 to balance the budget. And that's the, the core of those changes. Special projects is really just moving from the supplies and services category. And then lastly, transfers, the large increase in transfers is twofold. One, it's a shift from supplies and services. It's new transfers out related to the 1.5% increase that's being proposed in building and safety. And it's also an increase in transfers out related to technology revenue that then gets sent on to another fund to be held for replacement in future years. Next slide, please. These are the revenues for community development that existed with our initial submission and that is included in your fiscal year 2021 budget book. Not too much to highlight here. The, the biggest change that I would discuss is the service charges. We'll see that in, in the third column over the recommended adjustments. It's a reduction of about $69,000. And the main factor that is causing that reduction is in July 2019, council took action to administratively remove the zoning information report fee that was budgeted in the proposed plan for a little over $200,000, and that was removed in the recommended plan. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to move on to discuss the COVID impacts to the department.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Thank you.
In years past, we generally opened the presentation with this slide, just to give you a snapshot of development trends over the years. And I figured we'll put it in the COVID section this year as we're just kind of talking about what the department is seeing. This is adjusted for post-COVID. So even in light of what we're seeing, we still see building applications will have a year-over-year gain is our expectation. That's the red line. The green line, which is building inspections, we anticipate those coming in at about $15,000 to end the year, so up significantly from the prior year. And then the bottom line is design review applications, and those have been fairly steady, but up over the prior year. And despite seeing this increase, we will see that revenue is steady or decreasing. And kind of the reasons behind that appear to be the types of applications that have come through aren't generating quite as much revenue as, as we have seen in the past. Next slide, please. So this slide captures the last eight years of development revenue, projects where we'll end the current year, and then shows what our target revenue is for development revenue in the next year. This is pre-COVID, as stated in the title. And so when the budget was prepared back in January, using data through the end of December, our expectation was that we would end the year at about $5.8 million in development revenue and are targeting 6.7 for next year. Next slide, please. So after taking into effect the impacts of COVID and also acknowledging that revenues had started to slow, this was prepared after we had data through March 31st. We adjusted the projected revenue for fiscal year 20. All other data points on the graph remain the same. But you'll see that the, the change from the prior slide to this slide is pretty significant. I think it's around $900,000. Approximately 60% of that is related to COVID, and then the rest is just an acknowledgement that revenues had begun to slow. Next slide, please. So our expectation, our best estimate was that we'd see a 30% reduction in development revenue as a result of COVID from March 15th through June 30th. What that translates to is approximately $525,000 revenue impact. And when you split that up by the divisions that generate the development revenue, that's about $125,000 to planning and $400,000 to building and safety. We have not adjusted our fiscal year 2021 target at this point for revenue. It's ambitious and I anticipate that, you know, we probably will be, make adjustments to it, but that we just don't have enough information at this point to adjust appropriately. So we're going to monitor that and come back to council as, as needed to adjust. Next slide, please. So in terms of expenditures incurred that the department's seen that are above and beyond regular costs, meaning that COVID has eaten up quite a bit of regular staff time, but that is not outside of what was already budgeted. So we're talking about purchasing supplies that weren't unplanned and overtime costs that wouldn't have occurred were it not for COVID. We've seen approximately $30,000 in costs at this point. And just generally speaking, that consists of masks, cleaning supplies, overtime costs, technology for remote work, which is webcams, headsets, and then some document scanning that had to occur to allow the operation to continue. Of all these costs, over 50% of them are attributed to overtime related to COVID. And most of that occurred kind of right when it first struck and transitioning in the operation. Next slide, please. I'm going to go ahead and present our proposed 5% reduction plan as, has been requested. So we're going to, here is our, on the leftmost column is the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. Second column are our proposed reductions. And then the final column is what we anticipate our revised budget looking like after taking into account the COVID reductions. So the broad categories are, are the two largest categories are salaries and benefits and special projects. And then with minor adjustments to allocated costs, supplies and services and transfers. And we're going to get into detail on the items that make up that plan in the next slide. Next slide. So to, just to detail tho, those reductions that we're proposing, the salary and benefits reduction of $282,000, we anticipate achieving that through holding vacant an associate planner position for the entirety of fiscal year 2021. That workload will need to be absorbed by others. And some of the service impacts that you might see are code enforcement response times that reduced. We also anticipate holding vacant senior commission secretary entirety of the year. And yeah, so sorry, we're going to hold open the vacant senior commission secretary position for the entirety of fiscal year 2021. That workload will have to be absorbed by others and some of the service level impacts are a reduction in general administrative support to the department. And I put the projected savings related to each of these measures after, after the bullet point. And then lastly, we have some miscellaneous staffing adjustments, some tweaks that we're making to recognize an additional approximately $40,000 in savings to come up with that $280,000 in salary and benefits. Related to allocated costs, we're, we're anticipate saving approximately $32,000 there. And what the department did is we took a look at our, the fleet of vehicles that we have. We identified low utilization vehicles and decided to permanently return them to the fleet department to recognize savings in our annual replacement costs that's charged to the department on an ongoing basis. In terms of service level impacts related to the return of vehicles, hopefully we will notice very little to none there. And then lastly, on this page is a reduction to supplies and services. And this should really just have no service level impact. It's as we switch to the online permitting, we're recognizing savings in credit card fees because previously they were borne by the city when an applicant came and paid in the lobby. But now as we have applicants pay through the online system, that fee is passed on to the customer and not, not charged to the city. So we, that's, we anticipate $28,000 in savings there. Next slide, please. And then the other major category of savings is supplies and, is, excuse me, special projects budget. And so there's a few smaller items in there where Community Development currently pays a contract for trash services at Passo Nuevo. There's a development agreement that's going through right now. When that development agreement is executed, the responsibility for paying, for making that payment will no longer exist. So we anticipate that agreement being executed January 1st and saving about $34,000 on that line item. No service level impact there. This next one, there are impacts to the community. We're proposing a 5% cut to awards for human services and CDBG funding recipients. So that would reduce the amount of awards that have been put out there by $36,000. They'll stay 95% intact, but still, I mean, that, that is a, a community impact. The third item where we find $200,000 in savings is that for fiscal year 2021, as a temporary solution, we've found another home for the PATH, the homeless center contract. That contract, it's proposed that it be now be funded out of the Affordable Housing Fund just for this upcoming year. And that will have no service level impact. We're just finding an alternate funding source. And, but it's only a temporary solution for that. And then the final item in the special projects is a reduction in budget for planning and administration. And that limits funding to promote training and staff engagement. So that is $22,000 that was kind of earmarked for those types of services. And then finally, is a reduction to the transfer out of $35,000. And I don't really anticipate a service level impact here, but it's to possibly delay onboarding the Acela administrator position, assuming it's approved for a little, a little while. And because the second piece of funding for that was coming from funds that were set aside in administration. Next slide, please. And then finally, to wrap up the COVID section, I just wanted to touch on at the, when we were at the Finance Committee, there was a request if we could explore some ways to help the business community. And a fee deferral program is one way that we could potentially address that. So council does have the ability to waive, reduce and defer fees. And we could provide fee deferrals that would provide more time for businesses to secure funds necessary to pay those fees. On the pro side, it would support business. On the con side, it would take more staff time to execute those agreements and track these receivables that exist out there. And potential issues with, if the payment is not made. Next slide, please. And just with regards to this fee deferral program, we need, need to get some clarity on what type of project characteristics we'd be looking at. Would it be all tenant improvements, new construction? And, and also what would the program duration be? How long would we run it for? Next slide, please. And then additionally, what type of fees would we defer? And how much would we defer? Would it be all or would it just be a portion? And the timing of the payment where we would collect those fees from businesses? Would it be prior to inspection, prior to certificate of occupancy or after occupancy? And with regard to this program, if, if council is interested in exploring it further, I would just suggest that you give us that direction and we put something together and take it back to the Finance Committee before it goes back to council. Next slide, please. And then finally, in regards to the COVID-19 Business Advisory Task Force recommendations, these are recommendations that will likely have a budgetary impact. So resubmital meetings and/or direct access to plan checkers, reinstitution of previous over-the-counter plan check and designated CBD as 100% zone of benefit. And kind of the next steps to move this forward are complete the process improvement exercise and council policy direction on the scope of review. Next slide, please. So the, the next section, we're going to move on from the general fund and talk about the remaining funds that Community Development manages. I'll take any questions that you might have, or we'll go ahead and finish the presentation.
Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Jordan has a question. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hi, Mr. Hamilton. Just a couple of things off those budget adjustments jump up at me, and that's the reduced training. And I'm not really sure what the explanation was on the Acela thing. So from the answer before, from Ms. Brook to Councilmember Friedman on the importance of training and, and obviously, I think we're poised at a point in time where we're going to need additional resources for training rather than less. Is that $22,000 a significant amount of the overall expense for training? Or is it a pretty much an insignificant amount?
I'd say it's a fairly significant in, in administration at least. And I think it has some significance in planning. I would say that the, when I showed the, it's been a while, but when we opened the presentation and saw the breakdown of kind of how the expenditures break down for the general fund, there's 75% is salaries and benefits. I think there's about 6% that's allocated cost. That's for the most part, we don't have a lot of ability to change those kind of shared overhead costs. And then there's, and then it's just supplies and services, special projects and, and other categories. So it's, it's hard to cut 5%. I mean, we, our, our goal was maximize land development services and also be creative. I mean, I think you'll see in that 5% reduction, there's a couple of different categories of reductions. One I would say is reductions that would have been probably recognized anyhow, but we just looked line item by line item and said, okay, there's, there's savings to be had there. And then ones that are actually tough cuts with service impacts, like holding positions open. To, to reinstitute that 22,000, could we find another way to do it? I would like to, you know.
So I, I mean, you pay attention to what's going on too. Fair, a fair comment from me or a fair question from me that with the NOVAC report, just with the general state of erosion of retail, the COVID, the COVID-19 impacts and the grand jury report that it's certainly, if you're looking into the future, there's a greater emphasis on training in our future rather than a lesser emphasis. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then on the Acela thing, I didn't really get your explanation on the impact. So, I mean, I've watched from arm's length away on the Acela just dragging on and on and on and sucking up more resources and, and being supposedly ready to start functioning. Does, does that reduction impact the timeline of when Acela actually becomes a fully functioning asset for the city?
Councilmember Jordan. Let's see, Mr. Four has hopped on here.
Thanks, Mr. Four.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, Matt Four. I'm representing information technology. I've been working with them since Christie Schmidt departed. It doesn't. And the reason why it doesn't is, first off, Acela is functioning. So we, we know, we reached a big milestone there. There is some work to be done. There's, there are, there are some punch list items. I think the intent of holding the position open is to provide the salary savings to community development. We would continue to use the appropriations that council already granted for third party contractors. We're not asking for a new contract. We just want to continue to work with that very good technical specialist to help us while, while the administrator position remains open. So it's a continuity of service. And then once the salary savings are achieved that community development needs, then we would bring on that application administrator.
Okay, so it doesn't affect the path you're on. My recollection is that contract you're referring to was like six figure contract numbers to continue to try and prod that system into full functionality. And this little 20 or 30,000, $35,000, whatever it is, plays no role in, in speeding that up or slowing it down?
It doesn't. The, the, the role of the administrator is really long term. We need long, you know, we'll need, we'll need a position just like every other enterprise application that we have in information, information technology to do the day to day tech, tech work, but also to help the subject matter experts that are spread all over a multitude of departments to continue to maximize that resource and leverage that investment. So it will finally marry, it'll give the resources too, but it's going to marry the business needs and the, the business processes with the technology. It's more like a quarterback position that we'll have, just like we have for our financial management system, our asset management system, every other enterprise application that we have. The, the purpose now is, and you heard it over and over in this, this budget presentation, to shift the workload off of the subject matter, matter experts and onto IT for the long term.
Okay, very well. Thank you both.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Four. So with that, I'm going to move into the final stage of the presentation, which is just to touch on the non-general fund funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Starting with the Affordable Housing Fund, next slide, please. So the Affordable Housing Fund houses the successor agency loans and receives a lot, a number of repayments and also funds housing, housing developments and other initiatives. I hear what you'll see is the, where we're projected to end the year, our proposed plan, the recommend, the recommended adjustments that took us to the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. And then I also included in the last two columns, a column for proposed adjustments related to COVID. Because as I mentioned in part of our plan, we're anticipate shifting or we're proposing to shift the PATH, the homeless center contract from the general fund to the Affordable Housing Fund in fiscal year 2021. And then the revised budget that will exist after that proposed COVID adjustment. And I've also highlighted at the bottom, the projected slash budgeted surplus. And I included this just to show you that our recommended budget, the budget that you have in your budget book, had a budgeted surplus of about 750,000 for this fund. After making that adjustment to shift the PATH contract over, we still anticipate having approximately 550,000 in surplus in this fund. And that really is the objective of the fund, that every couple of years you'll build up some fund balance. You'll have some money saved and you'll assist with the acquisition of property or, you know, help a development of affordable housing take place. Next slide, please. This is a snapshot of funding that is currently available for projects, for affordable housing projects. In the Affordable Housing Fund, as of the end of last fiscal year, we had a little over 2 million available. We anticipate adding approximately 500,000 this year, which would end the year with about 2.5 million. I will say that next week's finance committee meeting, you will receive a proposal to spend 2 million of the 2.5 million. Additionally, inclusionary housing, we have approximately 683,000 available there. And then also in the SEP Fund Socioeconomic Mitigation Program, we have about 440,000 available at the end of this fiscal year. Next slide, please. So moving on to the home and CDBG funds, next slide, please. Home is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Its primary purpose is to support affordable housing projects or tenant based rental assistance for low income households. And the current year's allocation is 526,000. You're generally allowed 10% for administration. However, in fiscal year 2021, you're allowed up to 25% in, in response to COVID. We have budgeted 10%. I'm trying to get some clarity on if there's any special requirements to use that additional 15%. Once I get some clarity on that, we may come back with some adjustments during the year. Next slide, please. This is just a snapshot of kind of how the entitlement funding for, for the home program has run, has run for the last five years. It's been fairly steady across the last three years and dipped a little bit in 17, 18. And you'll see the same in the CDBG fund. Next slide, please. Over the years, the home fund has made loans. The repayments of those loans are recognized as program income. And that varies year over year, but it's, has a range to it. You know, in the last five years, it's gone from about 40,000 to 80,000, or at least that's where we were projecting to end the year. And we are budgeting 65,000 for next year. Next slide, please. The Community Development Block Grant Fund, once again, is a, a federal funding source through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The CDBG's purpose is primarily to support activities that benefit low moderate income households. And these might include construction, rehabilitation, public services and economic development. For the coming fiscal year, we have a little over 900,000 available with a cap of 20% admit on administration. And we have budgeted 20% for administration. Next slide, please. So additionally, so this slide shows the last five years of CDBG entitlement funding. And as you can see, just like the home fund, it's been pretty steady with dips in 17 and 18. Next slide, please. And also the CDBG fund has made loans over the year. They receive programming come through loan repayments. It bounces around significantly depending on the repayments that occur in any given year. We're projecting a little over 500,000 this year and budgeting 300,000 for next year. Next slide, please. Last fund we're going to discuss is the RDA Obligation Retirement Obligation Funds, the Successor Agency Fund. Next slide, please. So I included a number of years of actual data here, just to kind of give you an idea, to show you that it's in the wind down process. And if you can see the total expenditures or even the total revenue for that matter, from 18 to 19 to 20. And then in our proposed plan, there was actually nothing because it was anticipated that it would be fully dissolved at this point. It is not, but it will be dissolved in the current year. And this is the last year we will get any kind of administrative support to make that happen. So the recommended adjustments this year included approved administration cost of 100, up to 125,000. So that's what our recommended budget reflects, that the fund will be fully dissolved at the end of this year. Next slide, please. Yeah. And then the responsibilities of this fund are just to prepare the recognized obligation payment schedule. This fiscal year 2021 will be the last year of that. And preparing the final obligation payment schedule. In terms of capital projects, sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, no, I was just getting ready since you're wrapping it up. Thanks. Go ahead.
Where at Cabrillo Pavilion, they spent the last of the money that was allocated for that this year. And then there's one capital project outstanding, which is the Wisteria Arbor, which should be done in the next, in the near future. Next slide, please.
Okay, so that looks like that's the, the completion of the community development presentation. So questions now, and I assume that we have public comment speakers. So Ms. Sneddon, go ahead, please, with questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I appreciate that. I'll save my deliberative comments for later. All my questions are for Mr. Buell, if he's available. So, and before I ask my questions, just, and these aren't deliberative, but just a quick acknowledgement that there's so much that goes well in the community development department. We've heard CDBG and human services. I really want to acknowledge rental housing mediation, affordable housing, long-term planning in the LCP, sea level rise adaptation, climate action plan. Those are incredible plans and work there, work of the urban historian and the planning division. Still, though, our permitting process is unpredictable, inefficient, arbitrary. We've seen that in the Cosmon study. We saw it again, reconfirmed in the NOVAC memo, grand jury report. So these are my questions, and this is not deliberative yet, but these are my questions. Mr. Buell, what would you do differently? What do you see as the problems? Do you see a problem? What would you anticipate is going to come out of the process improvement exercise? What are you seeing in your leadership capacity in these departments, particularly, I guess, building and safety and in process? Are we acknowledging that there is a problem? And, and aside from our response to these other studies, I really want to hear from you what you see the issues are.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, very good questions. And I would, let me start off by categorizing my responses in, in two ways. We have, we have structural issues and we have operational issues. And let me just start with the structural first. And now the operational are, are things that involve my department and performance. With regards to structure, I'm referring to the framework of, of law that we have that guides what we are obligated to do. And that goes to federal and state law. For example, the ADA, it's tied back to the federal ADA. We have the Clean Water Act, we have the Clean Air Act and so forth. I, I mentioned that because that's a factor in what we're dealing with. And there are some, we, we've heard a lot of complaints over the course of years with how the, with ADA. And people are wanting to find ways to get around accessibility and stormwater compliance that goes back to the Clean Water Act in, in large part or in, in a certain part. I don't know if it's large or not, but there, we are obligated to implement those laws. And so we do, and we don't have a lot of control over that outside of the legislative process. And so my comment frequently to the design professionals and our customers that are frustrated with the need to comply with those laws is really you need to stay engaged through your professional organizations. And when you see laws that are being proposed that, that rub against your grain or perhaps not in your best interest or in the best interest of, of your clients, you need to engage at that level. With regards to local structural issues, I'm speaking to the, the charter that's established by the people of the city of Santa Barbara. That's where, you know, it's, it's our, it's our local constitution. It's, it's the rules that are set up for the city council, the planning commission, the historic landmarks commission, the architectural board of review. And those, and, and the scope of that review and the responsibilities, these are things that we do have control of locally, albeit it requires a vote of the people in order to amend it. And it's through the charter and also the municipal code, right? So we have, we have our, our zoning ordinance and other implementing ordinance, ordinances in, in what we do. And I was remiss, we have the building code that's also outside of our, our local control. On a periodic basis, the building official brings the codes for you. He did that last year, you may recall. So we have these local implementing ordinances and we have our, our charter. And these are the rules that the city council, through our municipal code, these are the rules that the city council establishes for us that define what, what, what you want us to do. And those are our, our core marching orders with respect to the local issues. I believe that it's time to engage in conversation just to check. And I'm not suggesting any sweeping change at this point right now. But I think it would be beneficial for your council, for the community, to engage in that conversation now. Because we see, we see concern, we see, we, we hear complaint with regards to rules that we are implementing. And if there, and, and also part of the structure. I, I would, I would like, I would welcome the open, opening up the, 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 you know, conversation, looking at the charter, looking at our codes and what we do. At the last meeting, Councilmember Sneddon, you had reef, you had, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you and, you, you embraced the idea of being able to look at more long-term, long-term issues. What is the vision? Where are we going and things of this? And that strikes to me to the structural, the structural changes. And that's, I, I would, I would welcome that. I think that's, I think we're at a point in time where it's really good because there are certain values that we want to embrace. I think the community still really loves the beautiful place that we have very carefully curated over the course of decades now. And I, and, and I don't think that we want to lose that. I know from, from myself, for myself, my professional recommendation is to hold fast to historic preservation and the things that have made Santa Barbara a place that is like none other. Now, with regards to the operational changes and the cultural changes and the improvement and the changes in leadership, absolutely, these are things that we need to do. And these are things that I am prepared, and I know that Andrew and Renee and James are, are ready for the challenge as well. It's to understand, starting off with, with our vision, translating that into a mission that accomplishes our values. And that is, that, that permeates through the organization, through the land development team. And when I say land development team, that includes both, that includes community development and the other four departments that participate in this process with us. I do believe where we are now, with the NOVAC study having been completed, we're on the, we're on the, on the. we're on the we're on the on the the edge of doing a process improvement. These will strike to the issues that were identified in the NOVAC report that we recognize that we need to do. And it we do have, we do have the opportunity to make meaningful change. Now, with respect to the budget and the requests that we have and the recommendations that that involve both the that we saw from NOVAC as well as what you saw from us today. It was nice to see some areas of intersection. With regards to having a more qualified or more senior level, when I say senior level, not entry-level positions, serving as staff liaisons to our boards and commissions. The boards and commissions are very influential, very powerful, and we have entry-level staff going into that. And that was one of the most remarkable observations I had when I came on board. It's like, wow, we have planning technicians serving in this capacity. That is remarkable. And as much as that has been a creative utilization of a staff resource, we see that over the course of time, and I would say especially as things as as concern has been amplified over the course of the past few years, when we have seen more and more implementation of the AUD. We've seen more controversy and more concern. And so it is appropriate to have a higher-grade staff resource with those boards and commissions. And so these are the types of things, Councilmember Sneddon, that we are prepared to do. We recognize the need, and I would welcome the opportunity, both to engage with you personally in the context and also in the context of a longer-term visioning opportunity for for what it is that we want to be over the course of the next generation. Now's the time for that conversation, very appropriate. And then also to dig more into operational operational improvements. I believe that once we have the 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 vision, the mission and the values defined, staff will understand what needs to what needs to happen, the attitude that we need to do that with, the customer focus that we're hearing from council that we need to to lend. And at the same time, hold to our professional, our professional recommendations and our and our values as as building professionals and planning professionals. And so I hope that answers your question in whole, if not then in part.
It does. Thank you, Mr. Buell. And it does. It does answer in the first part. And when we get to the deliberative comments, I think more of a discussion about how to actually implement the urgency of of what needs to happen immediately and that long term. I will appreciate that conversation. I do want to really applaud Ms. Brook for saying that we'll do whatever we need to do if it's clear. And I'll take responsibility for my part also in that. Each of us has a part in in council not always being clear in in what the priority is and what the direction is. So I'll save all of that for deliberative comments. I just one more clarifying question at this point is, so I just want to be clear that the budget that's being put forward here is saying that there's going to be a reduction in services? Is that the budget that we're seeing?
The budget that you're seeing right now, and Mr. Hamilton, if you would help me out here, the what you're seeing in the in the COVID, the COVID five percent reduction, that that would result in a a diminution in service levels as described in the various slides that Mr. Hamilton shared. With regards to other aspects of the operation, we are seeking funding for or commensurate fee adjustment that would enable us to pay for an additional billing inspector and the additional expense related to upgrading the staff liaison positions in in planning to the design boards. But overall, in terms of what's being proposed now outside of the five percent, Mr. Hamilton, is there anything that I have missed there?
Thank you, Mr. Buell. Thank you, Mr. Buell. No, I I think you got it correct. In cutting the five percent, we definitely made every effort to leave land development intact as much as possible. And that's why you saw creative solutions like finding a new funding source for the PATH contract. Are there service reductions? Yes, we're holding two positions vacant for the year. But we made it every effort to to cut five percent was was a challenge. And salaries and benefits make up the majority of the operation. We cut as little as possible.
Okay, thank you for answering those for now, and then I'll save the rest for after public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sneddon. Any other questions at this point before we go to public comment? And while Ms. Gorman teased that up, I guess Ms. Sneddon and council members, what I would suggest is that we think about when our revenues start to return, which of these functions would we want to restore first? And because our Community Development Department needs a support right now, I may put restoration of their empty or vacant seat positions at the top of my list. So that's, I mean, with all due respect to all the other departments, but we will have a discussion about the bigger picture. So stand by for that. Are there? There are folks waiting then, Ms. Gorman? Okay, we'll start public comment.
Madam Mayor and Council, we do have two people with their hands raised to speak right now. That's Anna Marie Gott and Richard Clausen. There are a few other people who have logged in and have not raised their hand. If you do wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Ellen Gallegos, it seems like you are and are not. So we'll we'll do Anna Marie Gott, then Richard Clausen and Mr. Gallegos. You can also shoot me an email at clerk@santabarbarca.gov if you wish to speak on this item. Or raise your hand. Okay, Ms. Gott. Please go ahead.
Good, good morning. I just want to remind everyone that Paul Casey was the person in charge of community development before he became Assistant Man Assistant City Administrator and then City Administrator. All of the problems that we have in the Community Development Department have actually been here for years, well before Mr. Buell actually got here to Santa Barbara. And you have to ask yourself, why is it that the City Administrator did not push to have new procedures, more training, and to actually go ahead and streamline the Community Development Department as well as building and safety? I want to bring to your attention something that people have been talking about, which is the design review process and how supposedly flawed that is. You know, it is flawed because our ABR and HLC and Single Family Design Board, as well as our Planning Commission, just really are not trained. And they're they don't really even look at their design guidelines, which are in some cases hundreds of pages long. One of the bigger things, though, is that we we had a discussion about all of the the front-loading that staff does in reviewing projects. And they do this through the DART report, as well as something called a pre-application team report. Those documents are never provided to your your boards. And those documents actually have substantial information in them of how a project does not actually conform to city ordinances. There is a project on the HLC tomorrow, seven ten State Street, that has a PRT that was only provided at the request of a member of the public. And that PRT actually is quite confusing. It says, you know, as well as the letter from the applicant, it says the project's being actually proposed under state bonus density. But yet it's using the AUD and we're providing seventeen parking places or more. But we don't have high-density housing in the CBD right now. So we are seeing a project that has a substantial number of flaws. And one of them, just let me, you know, get this out. We have a new ordinance that requires that an applicant show and with substantial evidence to the Community Development Director that they absolutely need a waiver to be able to build a project. They have to create it and have things written in writing. But we can't get any of those documents and the and the project is scheduled for tomorrow when it shouldn't even be on the agenda yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Richard Clausen. After Richard Clausen, Ellen Gallegos. And if Cassandra Enberg, Howard Green or Trey Pinner would like to speak, please raise your hand or send me a note in the question pane or an email to the Clerk email box. Okay, Mr. Clausen, please go ahead.
Thank you. I have several comments having to do with support for design review boards, part of the Planning Division. I noticed that Ms. Brook presented that six decisions of the design review boards were appealed to the council last year. And it would be interesting to see any trends over the last decade in the incidence of that. Next, I see that Mr. Hamilton proposes a savings of almost a quarter of a million dollars by not filling two positions that support the design review boards. And and also a shout out to Commissioner Jordan for noticing this item, that twenty-two thousand dollars that was earmarked for staff training, which Ms. Brook has said would take place, is also slated for possible deletion. My main comment, though, is that my understanding of the is that the Historic Landmarks Commission has received over three hundred communications this past week related to a particular historic structure on our east side and generally related to preservation of buildings that illustrate the early cultural diversity of Santa Barbara. I haven't read any of those emails or letters, but I would not be surprised if they echoed some of the forcefulness seen in recent public rallies and protests. On Wednesday at the HLC meeting, I'll urge commissioners to view those in constructive and supportive context. The overwhelming input through an official channel is evidence of the reliance and high expectations Santa Barbans have for the commission and its function. We expect a lot from the commission to preserve our historic built environment, which is so attractive to tourists, but also comfortable for residents. The record-setting outpouring of comments to HLC only shows that citizens view the commission as their official advocate for history in Santa Barbara. If the commission emails contain any harsh sentiments, I believe they really express just a disappointment that the commission has not been the protector we expect and deserve. I urge you council members to support the HLC and other design review boards and their work on our behalf. I noticed that finally that Mr. Buell lauded higher-level staff members being added to designer review board support. But then that also flies in the face of Mr. Hamilton's proposed cutting of positions. And actually, lastly, since I have thirty seconds, I just want to say that I have a different view of a prior general comment regarding the appearance of council members attending the meeting from home. I like the cinema verite view. I think it shows that you're working from home, just like we are. You put your pants on one leg at a time, just like we do. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Clausen. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ellen Gallegos. Mr. Mr. Gallegos, please go ahead.
Hi, Madam Mayor, excuse me. Hi, Council. Thank you. I hope you guys can hear me. I this is a lot to take in. But it's very important, and I appreciate the council taking this very seriously. I had a question for Laura Dubels, but I wanted to focus on some other areas. I'll send her an email. I thought it was great that we asked questions to Renee about training, but I felt that the answers were not adequate, in my opinion. It felt like if I were to hear her correctly, that there's there's no training program today. And there's no training manual today. It's more of a vision that she's hoping to accomplish. And that's kind of unfortunate, you know, it's twenty twenty. You know, I feel like maybe that's okay in the eighties or nineties. But but especially with the blowback that's happening today, we should be more prepared there. And then on to Andrew's department. I mean, there's a lot of inconsistencies there. At the counter with inspectors, you hear it all over the building community. You get advice that if something's going south at the counter, pretend to take a phone call, come back in because you're going to get a different answer every time you come in. It's not consistent. That's that's a big deal. It sounds like there could be some training issues there. You know, maybe people should be coming in on every other Friday and developing this training plan for the community pro bono. I mean, just a suggestion. And, you know, how to how to summarize this whole thing? It's just there's so much to take in. I appreciate everybody's time listening to the building department and their budget because I can see how hard the work is. But, you know, we have all this blowback in the department and city administrator for their how they're doing their job. This blowback is nothing new. It's been going on for years. I would expect by now they could have proactively come up with a detailed, specific plan to reorganize and provide a better service to our community. Instead, I hear excuse after excuse about what's going on. George just said that the law structure is set up in in such a way that he's kind of implying that his hands are tied. Yet another excuse. He is pushing change off to other entities like the local charter. We should see his recommendations polished by now so that the local charter can review, not the other way around. We have an organizations, when you have organizations that are not able to provide consistent service to the community and have no real training or process improvement programs in place. I want to remind everybody that that that's something that should be happening today. This is twenty twenty, like I said. They have a fee modeler, but no training in place for employees. It's not great optics. I can't can't support passing an increased budget or a budget at all until they can get those things in line. Thanks.
Okay. And when we come back, we'll ask about what training is in place. Thanks for that, Ms. Gorman.
Yes, we have one more public speaker on this item, and that's Trey Pinner. Trey Pinner, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning or afternoon now, Council and Madam Mayor. Just briefly on the topic here, as you've been going through the issues and discussing the budget and ways to deal with these these issues of sort of the NOVAC report was discussed and these other items. I would really encourage the council to consider the idea of establishing a new advisory board. As you know, I sit on one of those boards, the Downtown Parking Committee. I think this would be an appropriate time to consider a new advisory board. I think in the areas of city planning and and city economics. This board would allow you to help work through these issues of the NOVAC report and all these other matters that the community has been expressing regarding that department. And also, you have the issues of sort of the economic vitality of our community. Obviously, you know, we don't have a redevelopment agency anymore. And you, as the City Council, have just have a success story entity that does that. But really, we don't have, we now have Mr. Harris who's come on board. And so I think this advisory committee, as you typically select advisory committee through your council, through those that process, would would help to implement. And we hear all the time the need for oversight and accountability. And I think this advisory board would help you, the council, do that. You would, you know, appoint an appropriate staff liaison and, of course, appropriate council liaisons to these to this advisory board. And you could use this as a tool to help you work through this process. And I don't think this is a short-term process to resolve. I think this advisory board could be with us for quite some time. You have the Parks Recreation Advisory Board, the Harbor Commission Advisory Board. As you know, I sit on the DPC, there's a couple dozen of them. And I think this is the time to consider establishing a new one to handle this, the area of sort of generally the planning advisory and economic vitality advisory. I appreciate you considering this idea, and I don't know if it needs to be considered or a different agenda item. But I think it's appropriate, as you're discussing budget. This advisory board can help deal with these matters as you are as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else raise their hand, Ms. Gorman?
Madam Mayor and Council, no further raised hands for this item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment on the Community Development Department's budget presentation. And I'll call up Ms. Brook to tell us a little bit about I I had. I had assumed your training manuals needed updating, but if you're still there, or Mr. Buell, whoever wants to take that question. And then we do want to go to our deliberative remarks, take a break, and we still have the City Attorney's Department to review before our council meeting starts at 2:00. Mr. Buell, go ahead, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council members, before Renee shares anything, or perhaps Andrew as well, I'd like to share with you the types of training that have taken place in the department and across the LDT over the course of the past year. One, we did, we brought in a person who is skilled at customer service training, and that was required of all LDT staff. That took place last, I believe it was last summer, in the Faulkner Gallery. Secondly, we held pro forma training. And so a pro forma is a document that helps one understand the economics of land development projects, and it factors in the cost related to time, the costs associated with, you know, construction at every phase of the department, and what the intent of that was. And this is, this came from the, a recommendation from the Downtown Economic Vitality Working Group that was formed largely around recommendations from, you may recall, Amy Cooper. And so the request from the community was, we need you to better understand and to feel a sense of urgency and what it means when a project languishes for a long period of time. And in order to better educate and encourage empathy for real dollars being spent when land development and construction projects languish, we went over to the Housing Authority. We tapped one of their senior staff that walked all LDT staff through the economics of the project. And then finally, also last summer, we did a training for all of our design boards and the HLC. And that was held here in our Get Hard room, and that opened up very good dialogue between staff and the design boards, and that's something that we're looking forward to do again in the future. And so with that, if Ms. Brooke, Mr. Stuffler have anything to add, I would welcome them to turn on their camera. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Stuffler.
Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you. I do want to just let city council and the community know that the state of California and the Health and Safety Code of the state mandates that all building inspectors, all plans examiners, and all building officials working for municipalities, such as the city of Santa Barbara, must be certified and must maintain those certifications every three years through continuing education programs. This is not uncommon. We see this with licensed design professionals, architects, engineers, surveyors. But that is a large training component. We send our staff to the California Association of Building Official Education Weeks. There are three of those a year. And we send them to one or two days, maybe three, if we can afford to have them out of the office that long. And we make sure that they maintain their certifications and their continuing training.
Okay, very good. Ms. Brooke, anything from you? Or we will, go ahead, please.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to be brief. So much like the Building and Safety Division, we send our staff to outside professional trainings. When they're held in the area, we tried to take advantage of those. We just had the American Planning Association statewide conference in Santa Barbara last year. So we do try to retain enough funds in our budget to make sure that staff are up on the latest SEQA law and other laws that apply to our profession. And then they bring that back and share that with the rest of the divisions so we can make the best use of our limited training funds for those outside training. But I think the question is more about the internal training of newer staff and just the city's policies and ordinances. And we do have some formal written training manuals for zoning enforcement, for example. And we have some training manuals, although they're outdated, for our designer review staff and our development review staff. We've had them over time, but have not had time to update them as we adjust to new state law or changing ordinances and procedures. So there could be time and staff dedicated to updating those formal written procedures. So what we tend to do is we get together in our sections, talk about questions that come up, and it's more of an informal check-in with your colleagues about, you know, how have you interpreted this in the past? And I'm hitting a gray area here. This isn't clear to me. And so then they come to a resolution in that way. Where we come up short is that those don't often get documented. So those conversations occur, there's resolution to it, but it's not always documented. We do our best to try to discuss those in the larger division meetings or the section meetings, or we'll send out emails to staff if there's change in policy, but they aren't catalogued in a place where it's easily found by newer staff. So that's the training program I was hoping to have my planning analyst work on is really put all those prior decisions and policies and gray area of ordinance interpretations in a place that's easily accessible for staff. Otherwise, when we have a brand-new hire, they'll shadow with more senior staff and try to get on-the-job training.
Thanks, Ms. Brooke. Mr. Stuffler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, I do want to acknowledge that we have policy procedures that are written that we keep here at the city, and we update periodically. And we do have similar conversations at the program level with the building inspectors, the records staff, the plant examiners, about how we're implementing the codes. And we struggle with that internally, and we've heard it. It's been validated in multiple reports. We have some staff members who struggle to leave their personal opinion of where they think they should be, the extent of review they should be doing, and not coming back to a middle ground that we're trying to find, that we've defined and that we think we need to stick to. So there is a need for more training internally, and it is at the actual operations level as opposed to the code knowledge level.
Thank you so much. Ms. Sneddon, are you ready to deliberate, then? You have a question for Mr. Stuffler?
I do have a question. I mean, I can deliberate too, but I have a question about, and it's to what you just said, Mr. Stuffler. We hear so much about the inconsistencies. It's not, you know, I mean, we started off talking about ADA and storm compliance and energy compliance and all of that. Of course, rules are in place for a reason. I don't think, I don't hear people complaining about the rules. I hear people complaining about the seemingly arbitrary implementation of the rules or this issue of inconsistencies at the counter. And I really want to emphasize, it's not just developers or businesses. It's your regular person coming into the counter wanting to put a window in or something very simple that gets different responses every time. I've myself experienced this before being on council. So it's, you know, knocking on doors and canvassing so many members of our community who are just regular folks who are trying to do a very, very small, minimal thing, and it's completely arbitrary. So you said more training and training. Is that the final answer to that? Or does someone sit at the counter and really make sure that there's consistency? I mean, the counter is where we interface with the public. That's the first point of entry. And maybe this question isn't for you, I'm not sure. But since you mentioned that, and it's come up a couple different times here, that there's an issue with the rules. And I guess I'll just start with a deliberative comment, and I make this analogy, in teaching all the time, you can have very high expectations, very high standard of what you're expecting to see. If you lay the rubric out and you let people know what you're expecting, they will perform what is expected. But if something's open-ended and, you know, bring me what you've got, and maybe I'll like it, maybe I won't, try to go a different direction with that, then you get not the most excellent of what people have to offer and bring. So I don't believe personally that it's the standards themselves. I'm a rule person. I love rules. I love expectations. It's not that. I believe we can have high expectations and standards without having the arbitrary implementation and the gridlock. So I guess, I suppose it's really a question for Mr. Buell, because I hold him accountable for everything that happens in the department. But I think also fairly that you could answer this too. I know this happens in building inspections, or at least the complaints about it and the perception of it, that it's, the rule isn't the issue. It's the arbitrary, in some places, just dropping the hammer on something small, and in other cases, sort of not delving as deeply into an infraction. And if you could speak to the inconsistency, that's what I hear the most complaints about. I think that's what is coming forward in the grand jury. That's what I hear the most, is the inconsistency.
Thank you, council members. Sneddon, yeah, I wish I could tell you that we have no problems with consistency in my division. I've been doing this for 30 years, 28 of it as a building official, or 18 of it as a building official. And consistency is a problem when you have a lot of technical standards. What we have lacked here, or what we've experienced, both at the planning counter and at the building counter, is a lot of turnover. And we've lost a lot of our institutional memory. That makes it incredibly challenging to try to have good continuity, day-to-day, week-to-week, customer-to-customer. And we recognize that. So I'm looking forward to the process improvement exercises that address this, to not rely solely on my intellect and experience, but on the whole team, the whole group's intellect and experience, on what are the best ways for us to promote good, consistent responses and service to our customers.
Mr. Buell, go ahead.
I would just add, Madam Mayor, council member Sneddon, putting it also into context, and Renee spoke to this when she was addressing questions to her. The context that we're working within, over the course of the past seven, eight years, in particular, since we have incentivized residential development through our AUD program. We had, we've had, up until a few months ago, we had an economy that was just white-hot for longer than we have ever seen. And both Andrew and I, we meet every other week, and we have just been amazed at how long the economy had been going for so hot for so long. And you couple that with the policies that the city council put in place to incentivize residential development. And this community really, really got, I think, surprised with the initial success that we saw. If you define success in terms of residential development with the success that we saw with AUD program. You might recall, I think this was before you were on council, council member Sneddon, where it got to a place where the city council was talking about impact development fees and what can we do to perhaps cool things off a little bit? And we went into a housing, a housing task force and so forth. And so what I'm getting at is kind of, it's putting it into context where we have staff working incredibly hard and doing the best that they can. And then the challenge for me and Andrew and Renee is getting the time to, in addition to dealing with the development pressure that we're seeing, is to, on the back-of-house side, to ensure that we have adequate training. And really, it's the framework that you're referring to, council member Sneddon, to ensure that everybody understands what the expectation is as opposed to, you know, just trying to keep up with the work. 10,000 people at a planning counter, that you saw, you saw that statistic shared with you earlier. That is crazy busy. And that's customers at the counter and customers on the phone. In addition, the 15,000 building inspections that we're doing per year, that is crazy busy. And I put that in context with the other agencies that I've worked with over the course of the past 30 years as well. So we have been dealing with an incredibly hot economy and doing the best that we can, and it's been challenging, obviously, so.
Thank you. And for the long-term vision, I'm really happy to hear you're supportive of that, having the space for that, for the long-term vision.
Absolutely.
And then it's been mentioned a couple different times and a couple different ways, having a more urgent task force or advisory board or subcommittee. And I'm sure we're going to discuss that further. What is your recommendation for that? For what would be the good format for oversight and for really urgency?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Madam Mayor, council member Sneddon, great question. We are being, we are prepared to bring this to you on June 23rd, really flushing out and giving options and ideas to the city council, because ultimately, we hear that this is something that you want to do. It's something that I personally want to do as well. Because what it will do is, you know, you referred, let's take a look under the hood and see what's going on here and why things happen the way that they are. And, you know, you'll hear complaints from one quarter that fly in the face with complaints that here on, of another quarter. You have some members of the community who really want us to do a better job preserving and protecting and other portions of the community that would like us to, you know, let the brakes go off on regulations altogether. The answer is somewhere in between. And then when you have the challenges that we face on a day-to-day basis, dealing with, you might have somebody who's out long-term for, let's say, a health reason, for example. And then a couple other people call in sick, and their, or their kids are sick, and they're out for, you know, three, four, or five days. And how do we deal with that kind of thing? I would love to be able to tell that story and share that information. And it gets, you know, down into the weeds a little bit, but I think it's important for this council to understand who we are, what we do, and how we're doing the best that we can with what we've got. And we'll lay all this out on the 23rd, and I look forward to that.
Okay, it's a timeline for that. And I think we are people who enjoy the weeds, I think, at our council. So we're, I think we're ready for getting in the weeds, and thank you for answering that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, so thanks, Mr. Buell. We're taking recommendations from the city council about this department's budget. I guess I'd always like to set the table for this, these budget discussions to say that part of the economy is reopening. Our sales tax and bed tax might be coming back. And so whatever budget we adopt for this department and for the others, there's going to be some fluidity, hopefully, in the direction of more revenue sources coming in. So we need to adopt a budget by a certain time before July 1st. But we may be making, we will be making adjustments, actually, after that. So let's go ahead and make our comments. And remember that we have City Attorney Department and a closed session before 2:00. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan. Sorry. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
I'm just clicking the wrong buttons.
Me too.
It's not even 9:00 at night yet, so that's a good sign, right?
Jordan, and then Friedman. Thank you.
So I, I actually am a little more agnostic and hopeful, and I'm very appreciative of council member Sneddon's direct remarks, because one of my feelings over the past decade has been that really, the people that get the stones tossed at them, whether that's the city administrator, community development director, a planner, a person at the counter, they are clearly, I believe, a result, a composite of what this council, to a very small extent, just because we're only six months into it, but what past councils have allowed to happen. And somebody, either Renee or somebody, just alluded to that in that the message is not always clear. And I can take that back to specifically to being in the room at past council, joint council and planning commission meetings where points have been made and heads have bobbed up and down. And at the end of the meeting, staff still walks out of those meetings without being given clear direction. There was just a lot of people in the room sort of agreeing on something that maybe might should happen. And I'm hopeful that we're at a time and place where much more clear direction is going to happen from council to staff, and it will be a time to help staff implement or then make changes. Really, I just, I'm not, I'm not all that excited about holding staff accountable for anecdotal and real situations in the past where council has been just as complicit in- where council has been just as complicit in, complicit in not being the arbiter and the decision and policymaker involved in how we got here. So I think it's a good thing. I think we're at a good spot. I also generally just think we need collectively, we need to have a much greater focus on not just status quo, business as usual over the last century because we're not in the last century. And everything today has to be viewed through a couple lenses. One of them is actual financial dollars on investment return and what that means to our economic vitality. And that has to go hand in hand with the return of what the view of we want Santa Barbara to be for the next 100 years. And I don't, I don't think we do a good job of that. I think we do a good job of just applying what's always been around for 100 years and struggling with it. And we're happy maybe with the results, we're not happy with the process. But we're, we tend to ignore particularly the next generation, the next generation of people who will live here, the next generation of people who will work here. And that we need to find a way to balance that with, with our traditional view of Santa Barbara, but also recognizing that Santa Barbara is not going to look and feel like this 20 years, 50 years, or 100 years from now. And we need to get out in front of that. I just, just a couple more comments on things I heard in regards to training. Ms. Brooke talked about staying up with laws and processes. It's definitely from my perspective and the internal training issue, much in, in working towards process consistency and timelines, not so much a external training issue on keeping up with everything else we have to keep up with. But the emphasis I see coming in the immediate future is internal consistency, internal processes and results that get us to something quicker and less expensive that are the same results we've come to expect in the past, but a better process. An example was made of some of those laws, whether ADA or something else that have to be followed. And one of the examples was stormwater management, which is a current poster child for me of inconsistency and the implementation of the Clean Water Act. Municipalities or counties around us implement the Clean Water Act in agreement with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and in agreement with the State Water Board in much different ways than Santa Barbara does. And Santa Barbara is Santa Barbara, and there's a reason we're Santa Barbara. But there's also a reason not to ignore where we are right now in time and place with our struggling economy, the decimation of retail on State Street and trying to get out of a once-in-two-lifetime pandemic. And I believe there are situations like that where it's our interpretation of law, our local interpretation of law, and as we apply it locally, that can be played with, deferred, adjusted for a period of time to benefit our recovery. And I think that's it. I'm really, really just looking forward to getting to next week or the week after where we can start to, start to compare every department's suggestions for reductions and work on those more globally across departments, taking into consideration the entire community, than really picking on one department or another. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, that there's really, the work is more to come in the next couple of weeks than particular points to make today. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be brief. I echo a lot of the sentiments and comments of my two colleagues, appreciate your comments. The first thing I'd like to start off with is in regards to the issue of internal, of knowledge and experience of, that we're losing with some of our senior staff members retiring. And that gets to me is, is what is our plan for succession planning? And I haven't heard one, maybe we have one, but I think it's important. We've known for a decade that the baby boomers are retiring. As of 2010, if I recall, the census says that up until today, so going back a decade, that 10,000 baby boomers turn 65 every single day for the past decade. So we need to plan our succession. Going into training, I think training is a key element. I'm going to slightly disagree with my colleague, Mr. Jordan. I think internal processes are important, but external as well. Because if we don't understand and we don't have the latest information for our staffs and the training that they have to apply new laws as they change, very significant errors can be made. Just an example that I'm dealing with is a situation trying to build an ADU. And there were numerous occasions on it where staff had the wrong information. And then this individual had to go back and hire their own staff to correct our staff at the cost of literally thousands and thousands of dollars. So those are real costs, they delay the project. And so it was an ADU and a lot of this was based on the new law. So we have to have the training of our staff. The other components of it are the vision. I think there's, one is the vision of the council and where we want our community to go and what we want it to be and how we implement it. And that's up to us to clearly articulate the vision and listen to the community to inform what that vision is. But there also is a vision within the department. And we need some council direction on that. And in terms of, is it, is it get to a yes or a, in a customer service or as protector of the process as it was framed in the NOVAC report? I don't think either one of those are exactly accurate. I think it is, we have to be customer service oriented through the predictability of the process. And what I've heard today is that some staff can improvise and some don't. And there's a lot of judgment here. But until we have the proper training, until we have the staff that have the institutional knowledge who have been here that we brought up through the ranks and we've given them the support they need, then you can go ahead and have that flexibility. But you have to have the solid fundamentals first. So when Ms. Brooke said the trade-off is a more rigid process versus one of flexibility, I think she raises a valid point that we need to consider. But from my perspective, until we have the institutional knowledge and the proper training and support for our staff, we have to go with the more rigid process to get those fundamentals. A good basketball analogy for you, Mr. Jordan, is that when you consider the greatest shots ever, Michael Jordan's fadeaway or Pima Abdul-Jabbar's skyhook, it is all in their footwork and the fundamentals. It comes from their footwork and the practice of it. And they don't improvise until they get those down. And it comes from just basic, basic adhering to the principles and then you can have the flexibility you need. So I am supportive of having the more predictable process now. And I think that's where I'm at now. So succession planning, training and a more predictable process and giving our staff the support they need and the training needs to be internal and external. And Mr. Jordan's right, we, in terms of the actual budget, we need to look at all the departments in a whole before we start putting one department on a day here and a day there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm sorry for my daughter's interruptions earlier. We're having some toddler antics in the Harmon household today. So I just, you know, look, I personally feel frustrated by my confusion over what conversation we're even having today. I mean, I kind of feel like on the one hand, we're talking about long-term vision for the city of Santa Barbara. And then we're also talking about fundamentals and efficiency. And personally for me, I'm feeling like I'm not understanding, we're using a lot of sort of words that, that I don't know what the real concrete meaning of those words are. Like when we talk about getting to efficient streamlined process, I mean, those, that's a phrase that I, I know all of us have said that I've heard from staff over and over. When are we going to fill that out is my question? When are we going to fill out? Can we know where we all want to go? I'm hearing consistency from all of, all of my colleagues. We want to have streamlined, consistent process. We got to get the fundamentals. So that's Z. When are we going to get A, B, C, D? And I think that's what I'm missing. And maybe that conversation is to come on June 23rd, whatever that day Mr. Buell mentioned. But what I would really, really like to see is not so much of this broad language. I know we're all guilty of it, I do it myself. But I want to know, what does it mean to get to a streamlined process? What are the two or three or four actionable, real things that we're going to do to get to that end that we all agree on? So, you know, again, I make that comment now. I don't think it's really related to this presentation. So I do apologize for making it here, but it seems like, you know, I don't know when to make those comments. So I just throw it out there. That's really what I want to see. I, I'm kind of done with the broader statements, I really am. I, and I'm not an expert in this, so I, I don't know. And I so appreciate the expertise from the department. You guys have knowledge that I can't even contemplate. But for that reason, I'm really going to lean on you to give me those steps, those one, two, three, four. And I felt this way in the NOVAC report as well. I mean, I appreciate the broad statements, I agree with the themes. I think we're past themes, we need to be past themes. And so, so that's all I will say here. Agree with many of the comments that my colleagues made, really appreciate this thorough presentation and very much look forward to a substantive, specific conversation on June 23rd, Mr. Buell, when you bring that back to us. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Harmon. Go ahead, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just final, final comments on that. And really to, first to Ms. Harmon's comments, I completely agree. I think we've been talking broad strokes for a couple of years now, all in agreement that things need to have this bigger picture, efficiency, streamlined accountability piece. And I think that's why I so firmly believe we need a task force to oversee the implementation of whatever our recommendations, and it has to be very clear, bulleted recommendations from council to get that A, B, C, those concrete steps is, I think, what I would like to see the function of this more immediate task force to be, to really have accountability on a granular level of very frequent updates on what the implementation looks like. I'm very frustrated that that feels necessary to have to watch it that closely. I don't want to do that, I don't think anybody really wants to do that. I wish it could just be done. But, but I think that is where we are. I'm, I'm, I think that's what you're saying, I'm not, that's how I'm hearing it, Councilwoman Harmon. And that's what I would like to see, and I think many of us would like to see in that short term. Okay, thank you. I like to thumbs up, it's so helpful. So my, my final comment on that is that we do need, as you also alluded to, that short-term immediacy. But then as Councilwoman Friedman, Councilwoman Harmon also referred to, the longer term, and even Councilwoman Jordan referred to, to the 100-year plan, where are we going? We are in a different place than we've ever been. And it's worth our time and consideration to look at that bigger picture. So we haven't really talked specifically about the P3. And I think I would like to reserve really talking about those until after the NOVAC report is complete and that's coming back to us. So we could look at it in the whole framework. I will say, just as an overarching statement, when I look at them, they are a little bit, just, just really in the building and safety department mainly, they're a little thin for what I would expect to see after having had all these conversations, even from last year. So some of them don't really seem geared toward the customer service element or the consistency element. So I, I really do want to delve into those P3s. I think it's probably more appropriate after the NOVAC report is complete so we can really set those goals and metrics together. And so we're all on the same page with what the expectations are and what the measurables will be and what we're all striving for. I think I'm looking forward to that, getting all on the same page with that. And then I think we've probably had people in place who could do some training now. I mean, there is some institutional knowledge there. Quite a few of you are very experienced and could be doing that right now without the extra $22,000 or whatever it is. I think that's a really urgency issue, the consistency in training, and it's been urgent for a couple of years now. So I appreciate that the funding is tight, but there, I think maybe there's a chance to train each other there. And just as a final statement, before we look at the whole budget altogether, I can't say that I'm happy with a budget recommendation that's recommending diminishing services. I don't know how, but there must be another way. At least keeping services at status quo, at the very least, with, with all of the issues that we're facing. I don't see how we could simultaneously acknowledge we have a serious problem, but then also bring forward a budget suggestion that we diminish those services. So I would request from me, I don't know if there's other council will on that, but look at that again and see if there's some way that you're not coming to us suggesting diminishing services. So that, those are my final comments and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. We'll go to Ms. Gutierrez. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me clearly? I just want to support both Ms. Harmon and Ms. Sneddon's comments. I think last week I was very adamant of having an action plan, action timeline on the suggestions that the NOVAC report, the memo that the NOVAC group gave us. We go back with this, the staff needs more training. I'm new to the council, I think training should have been a priority once you have a staff member come into your department and that training should constantly happen every year. So right now with COVID-19, I know a lot of people are not in the department and I'm sure they're still working from home. I do want to support Ms. Sneddon's recommendation of starting to implement those trainings. I think to have a committee that oversees those action, taking place of those recommendations that the NOVAC report gave is very important. We need to start now. And I think Ms. Harmon was very clear on starting, you know, with number one, number two, and number three. And I'm hopeful that, you know, moving forward, we start acting and there's less talk. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gutierrez, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to agree with my colleagues and follow their motions when they're made. And just say that I appreciate city staff. I know that you have a very difficult job. It's just hard for, for the community and for us on the council to hear this endless parade of, of just upset individuals who have had interactions with that department. It's, it's hard to hear grown people crying about how they've had such a hard time dealing with that department. And, and we want to make sure that, that that doesn't happen again and make sure that you feel like you're getting enough resource and support to adequately address these citizens. So it's going to be hard with the changes that we're going to make. But I strongly believe that it's for the better. And, and yeah, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So my comments are that I've been the longest on the council and there's always been a tension between people who believe that the, the, the community development department doesn't help development enough and people who are worried about overdevelopment. But what happened after the Great Recession, there was such a building boom. And then the AUD program, Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program, gave these incentives and so many applications came in. And it was, it was boom, right? And, and then retail changed and that kind of gave the planning department a different kind kind of, of challenge. Um, I'm happy for the NOVAC process. I'm looking forward to the process improvement exercise. And what I heard today, when I, I heard Renee Brooke talking, she sincerely is ready for that process improvement exercise. You know, we know what the challenges are. How do we get to that place where we get better, uh, customer service? How do they do their jobs with good morale and, and they sincerely want to do that? So I'm hearing very positive things from the staff today. Uh, our building permit function definitely needs, um, improvement. And I like the idea of the P3s being refocused after the process improvement exercise because they will come into, into sharper focus. So, and then to the, um, the reduction in services related to the 5% cuts from this particular department. All of the departments are presenting service reductions. That's what it means in a municipal government that is mostly people. It's, we, we have people doing jobs to provide services mostly. So when you talk about cuts, um, that's what it's going to mean. So that's why my initial response on this one was perhaps what our council members could be thinking of is that as, as our reserve, as our revenues come back, which jobs do you want restored first? And so that's a good way to think of that. We don't need a motion. I think staff has been listening. We don't need a motion, um, taking notes. This was a very good discussion and we will take a very short break until, um, we come back. Thank you very much. This meeting is in a five-minute recess. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for unmuting me, Ms. Gorman. Thank you for being there. I see Mr. Kalan is ready to go. We're continuing this meeting of, uh, June 9th, 2020. Mr. Kalan, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Mr. For, or is it Ms. Gorman who's helping me with the slides? Ms. Gorman? If you could go ahead. Madam Mayor, given the time, I'm tempted to submit on the pleadings as we sometimes do in court. Uh, I did want to start with our mission statement. You can hear me? Thank you. I did want to start with our mission statement. The preface is probably the most important part. Uh, as in-house lawyers, we are part of the city team. Uh, as I've quipped many times to the city council, we don't make widgets. We are a support department like finance or human resources. Uh, our success lies in the success of the organization in producing the goods and services that we do produce. Next slide. I'm sorry, Ms. Gorman. Uh, there we are. I wanted to try and simplify the presentation with some facts that describe our operation. So in the scheme of things, we spend, we, the city of Santa Barbara spends about as much on legal services as it does on bill, building maintenance. And, uh, I think they are, uh, perhaps, uh, well-matched kinds of services in that their infrastructure. Uh, our spending is about 2.7% of the general fund and 1.2% of the total budget. I mention those numbers because since the nineties, I have used that percentage of general, general fund spending as a benchmark. And in my experience, corporations of any kind, but particularly municipal corporations, spend anywhere from one and a half to 5% of their, uh, operating budget on legal expenses. The 1.2% of the total budget represents the diluting effect of the enterprise fund services that we provide. Next slide. The only comprehensive analysis of city attorney costs that I'm aware of was done by the Los Angeles Times in 2012. The spreadsheet with these data is available online, uh, for anyone halfway facile with Google. You will see the highlighted numbers that the average cost for city attorney services in LA County in 2012, adjusted for CPI to today's costs, is about $34 per resident. I've excluded industry and Vernon. Those are ultra-low population industrial cities. They have maybe 60 to 400 residents and massive budgets. The comparable cities, uh, which I've listed, and by comparable, I meant full-service cities with, uh, what I would consider enlightened, uh, populaces who are very active with the community. You'll see that we compare reasonably well with those cities in terms of what we're spending on legal per capita in Santa Barbara with our cost adjusted for inflation at 44 per capita and the comparable cities at around $50 per capita. Next slide. Okay. Next, we'll go through sort of the structure of the department. Next slide. By way of background, the council should, uh, remember that we've gone through quite a bit of hiring in the last couple of years. And, uh, it, it's been productive hiring as far as I am concerned and I believe, uh, as far as we have reported to the council. Council will recall that we've reported twice now on the progress of, uh, Mr. Way as Assistant City Prosecutor. We're handling quite a few cases, less out of building and safety than we anticipated and more out of general, uh, street behavior or, uh, other, uh, regulations. Next slide, please. This is our organizational structure and, uh, it, it's actually fairly flat. I've, uh, identified the support staff structure on the upper left of the chart and the attorneys and Mr. Alva or investigator down at the bottom. Uh, essentially, the support staff have dual reporting relationships to Ms. Pensac, who is our supervisor, and the individual attorneys. Next slide. How is that structure divided? Well, we have four program areas that we're going to talk about, and I would call your attention to two pages out of the budget document. For this slide, uh, page B, as in Bravo 10, has a summary schedule of appropriations by fund for our department. And page D12, Delta 12, has a more comprehensive look at our office. Next slide, please. As you can see from the code enforcement quadrant on the lower right-hand side of this slide, where we've added staff in the last few years has been with respect to code enforcement. We run into, uh, an ongoing situation where there had been, uh, under-service to both community development and the police and other departments with enforcement staff. And the reason I call that out is, is not to, uh, point out the under-service, but to point out that the addition of staff in our office filled out a program that is really citywide. And so the staff additions in code enforcement were what I would call synergistic in the sense that by filling out the composite of the, uh, enforcement team citywide, we made the whole system more effective. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. So that same, uh, slide with four quadrants is here depicted as a pie. And you'll see that of our $4 million budget, the advisory and civil litigation, uh, components are roughly equal in size. We remain slightly biased towards civil litigation, although that's changing for the better as, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, next slide. This slide shows the department revenues. The internal revenues are related largely to a transfer from water and wastewater funds to pay for some staffing in this office. The other revenue in the sum of $311,000 is projected attorney fee recoveries from litigation that we're engaged in and various penalties and settlements. Next slide. We've made an effort over the years to try and work with the departments ahead of time and plan for their legal expenditures during the fiscal year. This slide represents legal expenditures that are not in the city attorney's budget, but which are in other departments. And you'll see they're declining a bit this year down into the $150,000 range. Next slide. We were asked by Mr. Casey to reduce our budget by around 5%. On a $4 million base, 5% is roughly $200,000. What we're proposing is about a 4.1% reduction. And the way we would get there is on this slide. First, as council is aware, we have a vacant legal assistant position. Last December, I proposed converting that position into a project manager, business analyst for the purpose of adding accountability and reliability to our services to other departments. In the discussion of consistency and training for the community development department, I was thinking in terms of the city attorney's role in assisting those departments in being both consistent and well-trained. And certainly, we have a large role to play there. I would like to think that for the most part, we are fulfilling our obligations to be a source of consistency and stability in the organization. However, it has been more and more apparent that we are weak on the administrative side in the city attorney's office. And that is a function of both how I choose to use my time and staffing decisions that have been made over the years. So what this budget proposes is the elimination of a position and the replacement of that legal assistant position with a project manager, business analyst. Secondly, in order to pay for that, we're proposing other salary reductions in the amount of about $184,000. What I've asked Mr. Casey and what I'm asking of the council is that you allow us the first quarter through until September 30th in order to work with human resources to, number one, define price and gain council approval for the project manager position. And secondly, that during that period of time, Mr. Casey and I can work together to determine what the most strategic reductions are for our office in view of the needs of the organization. Next slide. Service level impacts. Elimination of the legal assistance assistant will slow Public Records Act requests. That's a large workload throughout the city. We will have some delays in internal office support. I may be able to address that through relatively inexpensive hourly help. The salary reductions have undetermined impacts because we do not know which functional areas of the organization they will come out of. Adding the project manager analysts, however, will improve turnaround time and interdepartmental coordination. What I am optimistic about is that the synergy from having a more tightly-run office that is an office that's more reliable and consistent, that synergy will pay off and help us gain efficiency in the provision of legal services that might offset any impacts from salary reductions. I'm using a very, very imprecise pen at this point, so I can't guarantee that there is a one-to-one relationship between the addition of a project manager and actual legal services. But given the council's concerns about community development, given our tight relationship with community development, the project manager position makes sense. Next slide, please. This is again our budget. The only comment I want to make here is that I've made it a practice over the years and particularly in Santa Barbara, never to cut training. I work with people who I would like to think are lifelong learners. And we have a state bar obligation to gain mandatory continuing legal education on a three-year cycle. I would rather cut people than cut training. We don't want staff who are not fully backed to do the best work that they can. Next slide, please. Our project objectives. By the end of September, we will send out our Survey Monkey customer service survey. I haven't done that for a couple of years. That's on me. That's not on my department. Secondly, by the end of the year, we will prepare and distribute our legislative report. Council will recall that we kicked off this year with Mr. Casey's cooperation on, in early January, the 7th or so, at the first council meeting with our legislative report. And that helps train and set the agenda for the work we need to do during the year. Next slide, please. Our performance objectives need work. And I'm optimistic that a project manager can lend a quantitative eye to that without losing sight of the qualitative aspects of law practice that need to be measured. These performance measures are monitored. They are tracked and where I have doubts is whether they measure the elements of our performance that the council and organization are deeply interested in. We've come up with these measures on our own, not through collaboration with the widget makers in the organization or the service providers. And that work needs to be done. Next slide, please. I'm happy to answer questions, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Okay, we're taking questions from the city council from Mr. Cullon on his budget presentation, and I'm assuming there's some public comment as well. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I noticed on your slide it said pay reduction. Could you explain a little bit about the pay reduction? And I'm so sorry if you did already.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. There will be two kinds of salary reductions. Some position reductions will account for a portion of that, meaning it is likely that one or more staff in the office will have their full-time equivalent reduced. The second form of salary reduction will come from me. The council's aware. I have agreed along with Mr. Casey to work with the council to take a salary reduction to help the city get through the hard times we are currently in. And more importantly to me personally, to stand with my coworkers in a tough time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cullon.
Thank you.
So your presentation was so good, there's no questions. Let's go ahead and go to public comment. Ms. Gorman, are there members of the public wanting to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, we do have one member of the public, Accessible Santa Barbara, who has logged on and did wish to speak. If there are other people on the line, if they wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand within the app or send me an email at clerk or put a note in the questions pane you wish to speak. Okay, Accessible Santa Barbara. One moment, we're just going to get our timer up and going. Okay. Accessible Santa Barbara, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Will Railing for Accessible Santa Barbara. I'll keep.
I apologize. That was my fault. Mr. Railing, please start fresh.
Okay, no problem. I'll keep this brief. I just want to comment. You know, we do put in regular public records requests to the city. We really appreciate the response that we get. I know that City Attorney Cullon takes the Public Records Act very seriously and believes in it. I am concerned of that being longer response times to public records requests being called out as a as a result of the budgetary reorganization. So I just wanted to go on the record. With that concern, it is a state-funded mandate, unfortunately, that is imposed on the city. There are state-imposed deadlines as well. And I just hope that we don't get into a situation where there are inordinate delays and that budgetary reasons are given. Again, I want to underscore for the record that I think the city's done a pretty good job on responding. And certainly, we really appreciate the transparency and the ability to see public records. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Railing. Any other commenters on the city attorney's department budget, Ms. Gorman?
Madam Mayor and council, there are no further hands up for this item. No further public speakers.
Good. We'll go ahead and close public comment. And Ms. Neden, go ahead to commentary. Mr. Friedman, next. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cullon, I just want to say thank you for responding to, you know, last year's request for changes and you've been very responsive and proactive in that. And thank you for looking at ways to restructure so that a project manager can be in place. That will be helpful to council, helpful to other departments as well. And thank you for acknowledging what still needs to be done. I think that's really important to and I know you consistently do that, look for ways to improve and and then lay that out as actionable items. So I'm in support and want to thank you for acknowledging that.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. I too want to thank you, Mr. Cullon, for all the excellent work you and your team provide, the council and the city. And in particular, I just want to specifically say that the project manager I am in full support of. I think it will help some of the coordination issues that we're dealing with from the last discussion with community development. There is one specific project I did want to raise and a question. It has to do, because we've been getting some contacted in regards to vacancy control for mobile homes as a project that you're working on. And if you could speak to that as being a part of, if it is, then as a part of your proposed work plan for next year.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Friedman is referring to an assignment the council gave me in March at its retreat. And a very appropriate place to raise new issues. The question had to do with whether vacancy control could be added to the city's mobile home rent control ordinance. I intend to put out my report on that confidentially to the council this week. It is in my work program to address those code amendments, should council so desire. So next steps could take the form of a colleague's memo or a direction at a meeting in response to the report you're going to receive this week.
Thank you for that. The reason I brought it up today specifically is we received a significant number of emails from mobile home residents inquiring about the process for that. And I wanted to thank those residents and thank you, Mr. Cullon. You and I have discussed this with some of the residents over the past year. I know it's an affordability issue from some of our most vulnerable residents. So with that, I support project manager and appreciate all the sound legal advice you and your staff have provided us and continue to provide us.
Any other deliberative comments at this point? This was a very straightforward presentation and I would like to acknowledge that I heard Mr. Railing loud and clear. We've talked about other departments and concern about being responsive to public records requests. So I would ask Mr. Casey to put that on his list of things to address when we come back. How do we respond to those requests? Maybe in the bigger picture, we lobby the state of California to help us pay for some of that production, considering that it is a mandate. So not seeing any other commentary, we accept the city attorney's budget for now, right? We've been saying it's fluid. So thank you, Mr. Cullon. You and your staff do good work. Thank you so much for a good presentation. We'll close that item. Thanks. And I think we have time to do our our closed session. Ms. Clerk, you had something?
Madam Mayor, I was just going to read the closed session when you're ready.
Okay, so we'll introduce it here. We'll sign off. We'll do our thing and then we'll come back at 2 o'clock. Go ahead, Ms. Clerk.
Very good. It is closed session is item two, conference with labor negotiator as listed in council agenda, item number two.
We're adjourned until 2 PM. Thank you.